Okay, at six o'clock, we're gonna call the meeting to order. And we'll start with the pledge allegiance. President?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mel. I'll start with, uh, Mel, the girl call.
Okay, uh, Mel Nodaker, and I have no conflicts of interest.
Rob, no check, present, no conflicts of interest.
Gina Ravenmeyer, no conflicts.
Tammy Hassel, no conflicts. Mayor Carson is present, no conflicts. Is there any proposed amendments to the agenda?
Took care of everything, maybe it was published.
Yeah.
Can't take my.
I just realized that the minutes, I didn't print them in itself. To approve the minutes, yeah.
Oh, to approve them, that's something, that's just normal.
Okay, so there's no amendments to the agenda? Alright, we'll move on to, uh, the financial report.
Well, we don't have a script to announce that.
It's a...
So, I did what I could for the council.
It's on your...
Yeah, if you see the monies in the accounts. You don't, what I would like to be able to have somebody produce is the financial statements by class showing everything that goes to water, sewer, and not there yet. So you can see everything that we've made as opposed to everything that we have spent, and the bottom line is that we... Basically, our services that we bill for are about averaging about thirteen thousand a month, and that's the biggest thing then. Why I thought you guys should see. If you have any questions on it, I'm just saying we're kind of on our own for right now.
So the first part are the accounts?
Yeah, and then it's the total available cash.
And then after that is everything else?
Everything, yeah. So you've got your income, the first part, and then your expenses. And then it said next month, we need to do something by classification, so that you can see exactly how much money you're spending on streets, you're spending on library, city hall, parks. Parks. And I guess that'll come in a little bit here. Shows them out.
Alright, do we have any questions about that? Any questions?
I moved except the financial report as presented.
Alrighty. Can I have a second?
A second now.
Alrighty. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion passed. Alrighty, bills to be paid. There are no, no unexpected bills to this point. We, uh, have, we'll have you, Mel, meet at the office on Monday, and we'll sign the checks for those things to be paid. Our regular bills, we have nothing out of the ordinary that come up this month that needs to be, needs to be paid. So... We have no guest speakers tonight. Citizen comments, Brian Dayo canceled, he will not be coming in to speak.
I would like to speak tonight.
Okay.
I received a letter on June sixteen, dated June sixteen, and it says, Mr. and Mrs. Turner has come to contention, City of Tennessee, there are three dwellings, a stick structure, a tow vehicle camper, and a motor home on your property at four ten minutes ago. That, but that are being supplied with water from your water meter, number eight. To remain compliant with city ordinance of one seventy-two and sixty-four on July first, you will be charged two additional monthly bases of sixty-six dollars and thirty cents each. Two additional monthly sanitation grades of twenty-five each. This letter was written eight days after my daughter, whom I gave home to, who was homeless, and she was residing in the fifth wheel. They were wa, they were bathing, doing laundry in the house, and cooking in the house. That was strictly a place for them to sleep at night. My question to the, to this council is, does the city ordinance apply to rental units? Or to how many people live on your property? Is it, is it for units that are for rent? Or is it just any?
It's dwellings, I believe.
Dwelling, okay.
But you can put in a, you can put in a...
I had...
Wiper, record request.
I did. And I have got no answer. So, my request to the city council, since that trailer is empty, and has been empty since July eighth to prop these charges. Pray pardon me, June eighth. June eighth, certificate, eight days after this letter was sent to me by certified. So obviously, the city council doesn't really know what was going on, and nobody came to talk to me. And I'm gonna have to say, I've been on the website several times. I, I didn't know what the ordinances were. I did not know that you were charged for every single thing that might be drawing water, but wasn't. So I had no idea. Hydrant is not bliss, I'm assuming, what you're gonna tell me. But it sure would've been nice for somebody to say, hey, you have a trailer hooked up, that's gonna trigger a meter response. I get a letter, and I'm gonna tell you this letter came at a very bad time, and it's one of your business why. And Lee has been living on the property there in this bus. He is, he's man, one of the managers of the trustee, and I understand that the mayor, Madam Mayor went down and verified that there was water to that bus, am I correct?
That there, looks like there are lines to the bus and a camper.
Then you did not look carefully, because that bus has never had water to ever. It does not have the capability of having water go into it, period. And if anybody wants to come down and check it out, you're more than welcome to. And Lee can speak to it for me.
In fact, hydrant that we just installed there is connected to the irrigation system, not to the city water system. The, the camper over the winter was connected to the water system, but with just a garden hose running across the ground. But it's not connected anymore. And when I, when I came here, I had just bought that bus and torn the insides out and fixed it enough to live in, and I would even be datered for a year. And I never bothered to fix it so it could be connected up to water pressure. So, I just carry, carry water in water jugs. And I have a tank inside that I fill and pump out that. So, I'm not actually connected to the water system other than just carrying water jugs.
As you know, we can't make a decision tonight. You can present your issues.
Exactly, and so you're gonna expect me to pay this bill in full by the deadline?
Yes.
I don't have the money. My husband walked out on me, okay? I don't, and I know it's not the city's council, but the fact that you sent this letter a week after the first part was certificated, I, I find it earred and head sore. You guys say you are in touch with the community, but you're not. You don't have a clue what's going on. You don't have a clue. You see a hydrant and you assume, you assume. Instead of coming and talking and finding out what's going on. You should know, you're by there all the time. You guys should know. You just assumed it was hooked up to the house.
I know, so you should have.
I just seen a garden hose running over there inside.
So is this, so, may I say something else? So this was your call, correct?
Not my call.
No.
But you're the one that saw the garden hose ran over there and you reported it, correct? Yes or no?
Yeah.
Okay, second. You had a citizen come in here asking for leniency on a bill that is in conflict. As a city and council, you should put that into consideration, not just tell her straight up that she needs to pay it. It should go into consideration.
I wasn't allowed to finish. So I'll allow you to finish, and then I'll finish what I was going to say.
You weren't even talking, ma'am. You weren't even talking. Okay? You were hem-hawing around with Mr. Nodaker over there. You were not speaking. I'm not out of place. I'm just saying, as a city council, you all should consider to consi, to talk about this situation. Not to go and throw in her face saying that she has to pay it right now.
Nobody said she has to pay it right now.
Because the situations that was presented to you, the present, the...
I did not say right now.
The situations that was presented to you was false.
Are you done?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Now, what I was going to say was, if you want to put something in writing and bring it to, mail it or bring it to the office, we will review it and get in touch with you.
Why can't the city council make a decision tonight? You have that ability.
No, we don't.
Why not?
We cannot make decisions at the meeting that you bring to us tonight.
Why?
It's the law.
Did you guys make the whole decision as a group to vote for this?
At the last council meeting.
I, I'd like to see it in the minutes. I, I've been looking for...
Or all of the... It was the main minutes.
Was that specifically for the Turner situation, or does this apply to?
We're working on an overall...
And I, then I have another question. So you've said that the bus is plugged into electricity, doesn't have water, that it constitutes a water meter. Is that correct?
Is it a dwelling? Is someone living in it? Is it considered a dwelling?
If it's connected by power, is it considered connected?
It is a dwelling.
So even if, even if I don't have it connected to your water system, I still have to pay the water fee?
Because you are using water from the meter.
But I'm paying for it. And only a small amount per month. I mean...
Can I ask a question? What, what is the irrigation system? Where does that water?
That's water that's pumped out of the creek.
From the creek, and that was Brent Carter did a long time ago.
Okay, no, I'm just curious.
It only runs several times a day. Mostly, mostly just once a day. So that, that waters the gardens and moves waters and that sort of thing.
Is that off Noah's pump?
Yes, yeah, it is.
So the bus isn't hooked up to water?
No, never has been, ever.
No, I just haul it from five gallon container.
From the house.
From the waters.
From the house, from the house, or from town.
Just, just what I observed was months ago, there was a garden hose running across the yard to that.
Because I needed to provide water for an emergency toilet for the kids.
Well, that's, that's all I have to...
But see, nobody came and asked me.
Well, that's all.
You guys just made assumptions.
And, and that's true.
They were homeless, I gave them a place to live, and they used my house. My next question is, do you charge people for extra guests? That aren't listed in the resident?
No.
Because that's what I had, I had extra guests, but in my...
So guests.
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 Do you charge for extra guests? I had extra guests, but, but they used the trailer as a bedroom. And I threw water in there so they could flush the toilet. And you're telling me a hundred dollars for a garbage service too? And I never, nobody dropped out garbage cans. You charging me a month's worth of garbage, no garbage cans? If you were gonna charge me for this, garbage cans should've been brought out day one.
Well, like we, like I had stated, if you would please write us a letter, so it's in writing, we will respond with, to write...
How long, does it take, ten or twenty days? Because I've got fifteen days now. How long, because you don't have a clerk to handle some. How long before you'll get back to me? I don't have the money to pay this bill, period. I'm gonna tell you that right up front. I don't have it. My husband walked out on me, okay? And I expect you guys to understand, you have any sympathy for that, because this is a business. You're running it like a business.
Because it is, it's a government entity.
So we...
But they have no compassion.
No.
Understand, whether someone was in a bedroom in their home or someone was in a bedroom in a trailer, why you have to pay water for them to take a five gallon bucket out to there? I mean, explain that to me.
Did you get, you didn't, you were saying you didn't get a copy of the ordinance that you requested?
No, because the email that I, when I first requested it was wrong. I sent a second request and I did not receive it.
Okay, so I was under the impression that there was hoses and pipes and stuff hooked up?
No, no.
First of all, just, just to clarify that. And there's no water tank or anything in the bus?
Well, I have a water tank in the bus that I pump out of, and I have it connected directly to the, to the pressure system.
And, and that trailer was disconnected when this letter was written. I disconnected it the morning the kids left. Because they didn't need a toilet anymore there. They're gone, they moved to the Philippines, they'll never be back. So, and, and I was in complete ignorance that bringing it in the trailer was gonna cost...
Well, we're, I mean, we're new to all this too. We're going through all the ordinances, and we're trying to clean them up. And there's obviously, I mean, I'm not talking about anybody in this room at all, you know what I mean? We're trying to tighten up our system in general, just based on usage. I'm not trying to talk about it, about like a business or be uncompassionate to your situation at all. So, I mean, the decision and the letter were made based off of us thinking that everything was...
I was renting out trailers on my property.
Hardline hooked up, right?
Well, it's not, then if you go there, you guess there's a garden hose hooked up to that hydrant back there, but that comes from the creek, and anybody's welcome to come and double check to see where it goes. I would be happy to show you that it does not come from the meter of water, period.
I guess what we're asking is just for a variance based on this, the evidence of the situation.
And the fact that this letter is not be treated, or they are...
Okay. So, like I asked, send a letter, and we will...
And how soon can I expect the response from the city? What is your typical turnaround rate you're getting back to me?
Ten days.
Ten days, so that would be, today is the...
The ninth.
The ninth, so this bill is due on the third of... Okay, so then I will expect...
Business case, or business...
Business case.
So, you will get back to me before this bill's due then, or you're telling me?
Absolutely.
And do I need to send it, do I need to spend the money and send it certified? Like you guys, the city's broke, and you spend nine dollars sending me a certified letter when you have come and seen me and handled it.
You do not have to send it certified.
And I'll be sure somebody gets it.
Absolutely. If we don't, we save it within, by the end of next week, I will contact you.
Can she handle it, or?
She hasn't, oh yes, absolutely, she doesn't have to mail it.
I mean, I'll come down, pick it up, take it to City Hall. I mean, I'm not...
You don't have to mail it in the mail, you can deliver it to City Hall.
And you, Thursday, or Thursday, so there's nobody there, so then I can't deliver it till next week, so then I...
I, I guess I just have a question. If she's not able to pay the bill by the, the due date, will you shut the water off?
We are willing to work with you guys.
Okay. Yeah, that's all we can ask, I guess, that consider the circumstances of the situation.
Yes.
I know what it looks like, but it's not what it looks like, so...
Right. Anybody else?
Sorry.
No other questions?
For anything you're going to.
Sorry for...
For what's worse?
Citizen stuff?
Yes, I mean, just like we said.
So kind of hybrid version, like I'm helping run in the water plant, and I live here, I'm using the water as well. One of the biggest pushes that we're trying to do is keep the water plant running. It is in really bad shape. It is past its lifespan. They don't make part, like, grab the fabricate stuff for it, and again, the city's finances are not that great, and nothing was planned for continuing maintenance on the infrastructure of the town. So, a lot of this is cleaning up old ordinances that are either outdated or weren't finished, or trying to figure out a way, because again, there's only, there's less than two hundred of us here. And trying to foot that bill, we can't do it, right? So it's trying to put everything together so that we can start doing repairs on that and upgrading the plant to keep it alive, just so we can start looking at getting grant money and help for the community to do this. And while your situation, I, I, they, I know they're gonna work with you guys to figure it out, but there's other situations around town that are similar to that, that the more strain that we're putting on the plant that's already stressed and more out, if the plant goes down, we're out of water. Period. And then, then it's a real issue, right? And then it's just, everyone's trying to aggressively attack that, and unfortunately, it comes off as maybe more aggressive than, than necessary, I'm saying. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir?
Yes.
Question. Uh, it sounded like it's, everything is reactionary, not, you know, you're reacting to the problems, what problems are going to come. What is the long-term plan for a water system that works? Is that, is there a grant, is there a copy grant?
Yeah, so, so, I, and again, I'm not on the council, part of the water side of it, the utilities, maintenance side of it, trying to help keep things working. From what I know, the city finances were so bad that we weren't allowed to put in for grants, because you have to verify that the town can make money, that the town could pay it back, because they don't, they no longer do the, here's a bunch of money, have fun with it. It's more of like a loan process now, and like, interest rates and all that other stuff. And you have to get other entities all in on it to get it paid for now. And we've now, I guess, gotten financially to where that, talking with like, USDA, at rural, all the people that issue those grants, we've started communications with them again, and they're in the process of putting, like, having an engineering firm come in again. The last engineering firm was when they built that plant in two thousand. So come in and reassess everything to, to tell us how bad everything is, what's good and, and all that, and then what it's gonna take to either upgrade, if it's feasible, right, to put a new plant in, or what it would take to upgrade it to mitigate our, our issues right now.
So in, in twenty-six years, since they last did that?
Mm-hmm.
Again, it doesn't sound like there was any kind of a plan to replace, to fix, to do the rest.
There wasn't. In the savings account, there was thirty-seven thousand dollars in the replacement plant account. That, that doesn't even touch the paperwork, to pay for the paperwork we get done. So twenty-four years went by, and there was no money put into a replacement fund.
Why? It's a great question.
Great question. Would you like to answer that, Nancy?
I think it's appropriate. The only, well, the only thing I was gonna say in going through all this, just talk, I know everybody wants to get heated and do whatever here. But I don't understand how states and any entities expect for small towns to be able to replace a water system when the only money the city generates is off of the water.
Off the water.
You know what I mean? So even, I mean, you would've had to go back, and this isn't, this administration, the last administration, we're talking two decades ago. You really had to have had the forethought to think about parts not being manufactured any longer for the water treatment skids, you know? Deterioration that happens over time, just like anything you purchase, you know, cars, houses, anything. You would've had to have aggressively attacked it, you know, twenty to thirty years ago. So, right now, we're going to solicit for an engineer to try to redevelop a facilities plan for the water treatment plant, or the water system as a whole, which you have to, you have to have. And we're going to apply for two grants to, that are through two different organizations, US, what is it? Rural Water and, I can't remember the other one.
CDA. USDA.
To pay for the facilities plan. I tried to use the facilities plan that, that was put in when they put the two new skids in up there, because when I pulled facility plans from other cities, the facility plan that they used to put those skids in looked exactly like what I saw from newer cities getting water plants put in. And we had a, an individual here from where does, Rural Water, out of our district office in Port Lane. And they, and we had talked to some other people saying you can potentially amend those, you know, if you needed to. So I was trying to see if we could save some money by using some of the stuff that's in there, you know, to go towards the new facilities plan, because some things don't change, like the hydrological and the, you know, the soil, you know, makeup of the area. But they've, they've made this whole system very difficult for small towns, is what I'll say. So, we are trying to do what we can, and, and we're learning this as we go along, too. I was never supposed to be a city council member. I came down here because the roads weren't being plowed and found out we didn't have a city council at the time. So I stepped up and tried to, you know, help where I could. That's the only reason why I'm sitting here. So we're, we're trying to learn this, or I'm trying to learn it as I go, you know, go along. I don't have a background in running a city at all, or water, or anything like that. Same as most of the people that probably have, you know, been on the council over the years and stuff, so I don't know, I, that probably doesn't paint a very great picture. But, I mean, we're working with all the organizations and the offices that we need to, to try to get it done right, or at least get help, you know?
Yeah, I, I'll add to that, that we have made all those contacts with, with all the entities that would be involved in the process. And tonight, actually, we have potentially to, to move forward with soliciting the engineer, we have a motion to look at doing that. But this whole, whole process is very time-intensive. So even just soliciting an engineer, getting the engineer, getting, potentially getting grants to pay for the study, takes at least a year, year and a half for just that piece. And then after that, you know, making decisions on what are we doing? Are we repairing pieces, are we doing a whole new plant, or, you know, as a community, looking at our options? And then how are we gonna fund that? So, in the meantime, our concern has been, how, how do we keep our plant running until we get to a point where we are able to make, make those changes? So...
One, one thing that, sorry.
I just wanna say, you know, I've, I've worked as a facility manager in a number of places, including a hospital, for a number of years, and I understand how it is coming into a situation that hasn't been maintained in a long time, and I've had to deal with that personally. So I appreciate the work that you're putting into that.
Thank you.
And I'm just curious, are you just looking at replacing or fixing the treatment plant? Or the whole water system?
Little, little bit of everything. For the, the pressure downtown is high, and the, you know, some of the pipes weren't, you know, maybe bedded right, and, you know, rocks, you know, broke some of the mains down here. And then the pressure is a little lower up there, you know, and then we got lots for sale. So, when I look at this, I'm really trying to look at it like, how many empty lots do we have around here that are vacant that could potentially have a house on it? Because we've had houses come in. So if I try to put in a, if I try to ask and, you know, get in, get a, a water system put in that's not gonna keep up, not that PEC's gonna, you know, go up over to the top of the hills, you know, or anything like that, but if I don't, if we don't ask, you know, for what our maximum capacity and our growth looks like, then I think we're doing it wrong if we don't do that, you know? And if anybody in the community has any suggestions, grants, or you've worked any kind of the process, I mean, we're pretty well hooked into all the state agencies, but if anybody has a brother that's a billionaire.
I wish.
Or, you know, I mean, I'm serious, though, you know, right? So, and, and every time I go to a meeting and I look at how much all this stuff costs, I'm just, and I look at, you know, that's where I'm like, you know, they, you would've had to start twenty, thirty years ago saving for all this stuff. you would've had to start twenty, thirty years ago saving for all this stuff. To, to be realistic about it, you know?
So do you have a plan to deal with problems with the plant?
Yes, I mean, we're, yeah, we're, we've, yeah, we're trying to get a stockpile of all the parts, you know, that break on hand. We're trying to come up with, uh, we got a pump that they don't manufacture anymore. Try to come up with a retrofit plan. I know you've been scouring the internet, looking for parts and stuff. I mean, you know, three D printing's a thing now, I mean, all kinds of stuff, so.
They've been working on remedying some of the finances so that we have some funds to keep, keep the repairs in check as best we can. Yeah, so.
One of the. Rate rates came from, is part of that. We have, I, in contact with RDEC, they're gonna come in and do like a legit rate study for us to say, this is how much we should be paying. Based on, you know, how many people are here, our, our income, or fix that. I mean, I don't pay everybody, I don't want to, but if that's what keeps the water on, I'll do what I can, right? But they could, yeah, but then, so hopefully they could come in and tell us if we're on the right track, if we need to go a different direction or whatever. It's, like I said, for me, it's just how do we keep that going? And then I'm up at the plant, running the plant. If anybody has questions or you wanna know more about them, I'm all about giving that information out. I don't want any enemies, like it's pointless to me. I don't, I just wanna make sure that everything's working, um, and that it continues to work even if I'm replaced or something changes down the road. So like I said, I, I wanna get that information out. And we're getting to the point, I feel, to where we're gonna start getting that information and to disseminate and then vice versa. If we have input coming back, like stuff that isn't working, then we gotta start thinking of ways to make it work. That way we're not squeezing people or, you know, making it to where it's a super burden to get things done. Like that's not the goal, is try to do it as a whole, that way the whole town doesn't dry up and, and so it's a little like.
So I, I understand that's quite a challenge, the fact that I noticed when you were giving the financial report, but it sounds like you don't really even have an accounting system.
Well, and that's where I come in. And I've been actually working a lot with the city clerk in teaching accounting, I'm an accountant. So that we can reduce paperwork and, and what I would like is a burden. I would like to be able to show the public exactly what we're spending as opposed to exactly what we're making.
I think everybody deserves to have that information.
Right, and so that has taken some time because, uh, they're inexperienced in accounting. And now we have cropped up another problem. But I think, uh, I'm hoping by next month, we're gonna go live with a different accounting system. Be able to spit that stuff out for you guys, but you can see, because if, if, if the community can see what we're spending as opposed to what we're bringing in, I think it makes it a little bit easier to swallow.
Of course.
Cause right now, it's here and it's kind of like.
It seems like there's just no information to gauge what's really going on.
Right.
And that's, that's a problem.
And that's what we're doing right now is gathering information so we can share it with everybody.
So do you have?
With that being, with that being said, could I get a copy of that financial report tonight then?
Absolutely. Do you wanna hand it?
Do you have a, have you hired a new clerk? Thank you.
We're in the process.
You are?
We did, yes, we are in the process.
Okay.
We should know something by Monday.
Okay. Well, if you don't have a clerk, I've had quite of an accounting background.
So.
Uh, the checkman in your application.
Yeah, various.
I might be willing to help, you know, get, get things set up and.
So I know that Tammy donates.
Hundreds of hours.
Hundreds of hours, free. I mean, they'll pay it all. She works down here more than I, by far, and.
And I don't work here.
Well, she doesn't work here, but she donates her time, you know?
I know, I talked to you the other day.
And so does Cheryl, because we're short-handed stuff, but both of them do, are down here way too much.
If you have, uh, somebody who doesn't understand like an accounting process, it's, it can be really hard. And so the time that it takes to train somebody is, it can be, you know, cause you want it done correctly.
Well, it's more than just putting numbers down on a sheet, it's understanding the process.
Just understanding the process and then understanding the problems at the right time.
Exactly.
So it's not just, you know, I have a degree and I got a school, I know.
That's usually the case.
Yeah, so, so it takes time, you know, it takes time. And hopefully, I'll be out there really soon. I'm pretty nervous.
Crossing your fingers and toes.
Yeah. It's, I have to think it's.
And lots of love prayers being said.
So, uh, if, if I could, if, I mean, if it's not too forward to ask, what, what accounting system are you gonna use?
We're in QuickBooks Desktop right now. I'm, hopefully by August first, we're gonna be integrating into QuickBooks Online, the comprehensive one. So that we have that comprehensive reporting, so that everybody can look at that comprehensive reporting and make sure it's accurate, you know?
I've used that before.
The online.
It's actually quite good.
Yeah, yeah. And so you can basically create. It, it'll be good. I've been working with QuickBooks for a long time, it's a very big program. Alrighty, is there any other comments, questions?
Come on.
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is the old, okay, worst case, what happens if tomorrow our water system stops working?
So we do have backups, that's part of the reason why, um, we subscribe to DEQ, or not, to IRWA. They do have fail-safe systems in that, they have two large water trucks, um, that they will bring up. And they will be able to supply water to the city.
And that is potable water.
That is fully potable water. Most likely, they'd probably get it from Orifino, bring it up here and then just distribute it. Once it's empty, they go back, um, and then.
Say distribute it, just hook it up to the water system?
Yeah, it, it would be hooked up and filled, fill our reservoir up there.
Yeah, alright.
Um, kinda at that point, it would be, try to figure out how to fit, get the water system going as quick as we could. We do have two skids up there. And we actually did have a problem a couple of months ago where one of them went down for a little bit. And it's taxing on the other one, but we do have that backup just so we don't go up there and all of a sudden, one of the skids are down. Oh, sorry guys, no water anymore. We, we have a backup to run.
So with the skid, are you talking about the treatment?
Yes.
Yes.
So you have two separate treatment, correct?
Yeah, Leroy, do you have a picture of that by chance?
So, um, I, I need to get more pictures of it. Here's the pump that we were having trouble replacing and stuff, that they don't make anymore and stuff. Um, it can be set up as a variable speed pump and stuff. But it, it would be rather easy to go ahead and replace that pump. So this whole plan is all, whoops, is all component plan. Um, the only thing that isn't, um, really a component in it is, um, the filters. Now, as you see here, there's, these are filters here, so that run up and down. And there are fibers and stuff in there and stuff. And, uh, so there's, there's two of these skids. So we got one, one that, that we, one can shut down and one can pretty well keep up with the city and keep producing the amount of water that is needed for the city to run. But it is running constantly to do it.
Sure.
Until we get the other one repaired, then they switch back and forth between each one to go ahead and, um, to maintain the water that we need and stuff.
Yeah.
Granted, comes summertime, you know, and God forbid it leaks, you know, um, that we can keep up with it and stuff, you know? Um, I'm, I've been able pretty well to, um, locate most of the leaks in town, um.
We had some pretty bad ones.
Yeah, and so, um, what I do is I have a stethoscope, which is, you know, it sounds shaky, but it worked in Orifino for them anyway. And I go around, I just stick it on the water leak and I can tell if it's hissing or not. Now I know, I know if there's a water leak within that area. And then I can even drill holes into the ground, go into the ground with my stethoscope and figure out where that water leak is at and stuff. So we've been narrowing them down. I got maybe a small one down here at this end, I got a hydrant up on Main Street that's leaking a little bit. I got one on Main Street that's leaking a little bit and stuff like that. And I got a major leak in the park with the sprinkler system right now, so. In fact, I'm digging a big hole in the park sometimes to.
So you do it several times, yeah.
Yeah, and, and the thing with the park thing is that when they put in that sprinkler system, it's just like a really thin white plastic pipe. I mean, it's like a schedule twenty or less, you know? I didn't even know they made white pipe that's, that thin, you know, and stuff. So it keeps rolling apart now and stuff.
You can, you can get that for, farmers use that in their irrigation systems.
Yeah, a lot, yeah. And what I had to do in Orifino to alleviate that problem, um, especially with the sprinkler system and the splash pad. And there, they had a hell of a type of splash pad. It's cause then valves shut off and turn on so fast and stuff, that it's creating such a hammer inside the system. It's like self-destructing and stuff. So I had to go into the city in Orifino and put in a, a tank to sort of absorb that impact, you know, and stuff. And that's my, what we might be looking, doing down here too. Plus it would be nice to cut the pressure coming down from the top to here. Cause down here, we got like a hundred and twenty PSI. And up there where he's at, he's probably lucky if he's got forty PSI, you know? So, um, it's just the idea, the, the system could've been maybe a little more fine-tuned when they put it in. And then maybe it could've had a little more supervision when it was put in and stuff, you know? And I talked to a couple of people that were doing that when they put the system in back, was it eighty, I think it was?
Seventies, right?
Seventies, that's probably a lot, yeah.
Yeah, seventy four, cause I, yeah, seventy four, seventy five, when I was digging through.
Well, I, I've seen some of the holes that have been dug in the last few years, fixed water leaks. And whoever installed the system screwed the city really bad, cause there's no back.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure they were.
Against the pipe and everything.
I'm sure they were just excited to have run water at all.
Well, I'm sure they were too.
You know what I mean, I'm not trying to.
But like you say, there wasn't a supervision of them doing it and stuff. Scott Rowland was one of the people that was insupervised at it, but he had no idea what he was doing. He's talked to me about it before and stuff like, when they were putting it in, they, they appointed me to go ahead and watch over it. But he said, I, I had not a clip.
Yeah.
And I, I, I really wish that I, I was just kidding.
I just got a couple more questions. But to answer your, your question, so worst case scenario, if the skids went offline or we did, we have a two hundred and forty thousand gallon, that's the tower up there. So we would have, it's not like no water the next day, right? We would have a few days of that and then we do have emergency, they could truck water in for us. It would be basically, you know, a temporary band-aid until we can for sure be like, well, we're screwed now. Or this is what has to happen to get water back online. Um, and we have it pretty well triaged now that it's no longer redline, it's not screaming all the time. So now it's just, we're, we're now seeing the critical parts that they either don't make anymore or they phased out. So now we're like, okay, well, how do we find these parts? And how do we afford these parts? And start stockpiling some of that up with the funds that we do have. While, again, because this grant stuff, it's years to get them to do anything, just the red tape and all the, I, it, so I understand that's a nightmare. So we wouldn't lose, I'm not trying to doze they, like we wouldn't lose water immediately. But the plant is in rough shape. And if we don't start addressing it, we could be in trouble in the next few years.
So we don't need to each start drilling wells though?
Right. Don't call the, don't call the well companies yet, because, and that's, and that's the other thing too, we talked about that. Is with all the septic tanks around here, EPA may not let us drill too many wells. Because they're in so close proximity and the creek and all, there's so many other, it's a whole other can of worms. If we had to go to wells, a lot of people wouldn't be able to. Whether they could afford it or EPA says you can't. Um, so it's beneficial to the community that we figure out a great plan of action and try to keep it going and build on that. So.
Well, one last thing to touch on, if I could, kinda tie both of your questions in together. One of the biggest things that no city ever could've seen was run out. Shut everything down. There are parts up at the plant, that pump was one of them. And there's also a light bulb for, um, our turbidity system. That thing was in, I believe it was a nineteen seventy-four Chevy, it was the main light bulb for it. Everyone had them, you can go to any parts store, you can go to NAPA or anything. They had a stack of them right there and that's what was used in our turbidity meters. You can't get them now. They don't make it anymore, they make, um, more of like a LED hybrid of them that does not work in our turbidity meter anymore. So we're getting to the point, we, we have some on stock, but we're getting to the point now of, are we gonna have to start going to eBay for used stuff? Or are we gonna have to buy a brand new turbidity meter that's ten thousand dollars to run it? And the control head that we have on there, of course, doesn't run any of the new stuff. So we have to get a new control head, which is another, another seven thousand dollars. And that pump right there, uh, we've, we've got a pump guy for Orifino, I told him about it. He's, oh yeah, I'll get it for you, I'll get all the info, don't worry. This guy's really good at his pumps. He knew exactly what pump could replace it. He got back to me two weeks later, he's like, I'm so sorry, I searched as hard as I can, they do not make that pump anymore. And I was asking, he was like, whoa, what, when did they stop? He said, about three years ago. They decided they're not keeping inventory, they can't keep enough workers in their production line to make older stuff. So they're only focusing on new stuff. So we are trying to stockpile as much of the older stuff as we can. We're trying to foresee certain things and calling, I've called Gmu, uh, on their valves. We've got some of the MAC valves that were, we replaced and we're calling, hey, how long are you guys gonna have this product? If not, give me as much as you can within our budget. So we're, we're trying to stockpile against that thing shutting down.
Is there not a workaround on some of those things for newer stuff?
Some of them are, um, that pump, they don't make that size anymore. So we're going to have to cut into that metal, drop it down a little bit, make a new cage for it to bolt down.
And it's got a fabricate.
Sure.
Yeah.
And some of that we can get away with.
Yeah, yeah, we can refurbish it, pretty well everything for the plant, except like you say, these, these filters and stuff. That, 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 there's a huge key, um, these here. Um, and there's, there's six of them on each machine, all these filters.
So that'll just, like, maybe something you can put like a, a triple-layer, uh, pocket filter in there.
Pretty close.
So if, if you guys don't know how our filter system actually works, have you ever heard of the LifeStraw? They used to have commercials, you stuck it in African mud puddles and you could get clean water out of it. That's basically what these are, they filter down to point zero one microns. Uh, so none of the bacteria, none of the sediment, none of the turbidity can get through. The only thing that technically can get through is viruses, which is why we do put a little chlorine that's required by EPA. After that, there's no other chemicals. So those filters are so precise and, which makes them expensive. But the last filters we had in there were twenty years old. And we replaced them, I think it was four or five years ago now. So the, these filters with how good our infiltration system is, the way that they made that down there for intake. The, the filters themselves, unless something crazy happens, knock on wood, will probably last another twenty years. It's, it's all the stuff around it that we need to work with.
Okay, thanks. So are these pumps just injecting chemicals into the water system itself?
There's a little side pump that mirrors, it's like a drip-drop system as the water comes out of it and it reads it. And then it'll, and it's actually, I had a contact.
So you're, you're talking about chlorine pump?
Yep.
Yeah, you're, yeah. But they're talking, we're talking about the main pump that runs the whole pump.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that big pump is the one that forces it into those membranes, forces the water through. And then it's just gravity fed from there back over to our reservoir.
Oh, I see, okay.
And I'm up there a few hours every day, so if anybody wants to come up and look at it.
This is one of the water laws that she was talking about, financial burden. Okay.
It's treated in the main port, so it's going to the ground.
Of course, yeah. No, I understand.
Some of our leads you want.
So this has got the chlorine setup, is this here?
Yep.
This is the chlorine setup here. And, uh, there's your chlorine right there.
Right.
And it goes up to a pump that meters it.
It's like a little dose emitter.
And then you see where it comes down here and it's injected into the line going to the tank.
So I, I can positively tell everyone, there's no fluoride in our water. It's quite, it's quite literally just point zero three parts per million, uh, or technically it's three parts per million of chlorine.
And we even cut the chlorine, it's not even straight chlorine, we diluted it.
Yeah.
I've, I've tested the water, I noticed that it didn't have much chlorine, which is.
Just enough, yeah.
Yeah, our system's small enough and the reservoir gets turned over enough that we don't have to spike a huge amount in there. We don't have to put extra chemicals. These filters are amazing, that's what we have in Orifino. Uh, it's the exact same thing, just on a much bigger scale. And actually Lewiston up in their orchards, they came down to Orifino and toured the plant there. So they have an even bigger version of what we have. So they have an even bigger version of what we have. So, and if, i- if I understand everything correctly, our plant is the first one in the state of Idaho to use that microfiltration in water or in drinking water works.
It's, it's unique, but it also doesn't help.
Overstand, yeah. increases the cost of maintaining.
But I'm sorry to hijack the.
Yeah, sorry.
Town hall, but if anyone has any water questions, like I said, I'm up at the plant. I'll gladly show you what I'm still learning, how to do it myself. Justin's having to hold my hand through most of it. But I'll share any information, like I said, I'm all about getting the information out to everyone else because we need each other to make this work.
Actually, I would to come up.
So, yeah, so any, anytime if I'm up there, I'll, I can show you around.
I would get a hold of him.
Yeah, definitely, just get a hold of me. We get a little answer when people are up there unsupervised to take their water. But, but like I said, I'm more than willing to show anybody that wants to and teach you what I do know. So, sorry guys.
Yeah, if you want to, you swing by City Hall, we can schedule.
Yeah, you can radio me or call me.
Yeah, I'd love to, I'd love to see that.
Anyway, we're, we're trying, we're trying.
We're trying, guys.
Well, it was, it was just a shock to us to see this huge bill.
I understand.
Oh yeah, I understand that.
Yeah. Well, and the other thing is, is like, I really, I'm sorry. So the, kind of, because I'm also on the fire department, so not your guys' situation specifically, right? I mean, but people, you know, it's hard, it's hard to buy a house around here. So I know it's driven a lot of people into campers and stuff. Not only that, outside of cities, you know, it's driven them into campers and rural areas, you know. So, you know, when it comes to fighting fire and stuff, you know, if you're in one of those, you're toast, right? You know, we're not gonna deal with it. But I, I've been reading about a lot of other states that have similar problems like Washington and Oregon with their emergency action plans. And like, you know, I'm trying to scour, because this is kind of an unforeseen thing, people having to move into a bunch of campers, right? So then obviously the question goes, where's gray and black water going? You know what I mean? So a lot of cities, you know, just trying to keep things healthy and sanitary and safe for everybody living there have made ordinances and some places require permits to live in, you know, a camper, you know, there's, it just depends, right? So we're trying to pick the best version of all those things that kind of fits us, you know, as we're going forward, so.
And I know there, the septic, what, what little water from the trailer is taken and it was poured over to the, to our septic tank. So which is in the inner city, but we were not dumping stuff on the ground.
Yeah, I was just trying to give a big snapshot on why, you know, so.
I'm very conscientious, I like to keep my property clean and tidy and not.
That's good. Not everybody's that conscientious.
Correct. So I brought, I brought that up to the commissioner last time he was here, just, you know, for what it's worth. And I asked him, because when I go on to Nez Perce County, you know, and look through, you can look at quite a few of their ordinances. It's kind of hard to find everything, you know, and some cities pay companies to host their ordinances. We're gonna try to get all of ours scanned in and, you know, the website's a new thing and everything. But they don't really have anything, you know, either other than, I think you have to apply for a permit if you're buying land and you're gonna live in your camper, you know, past like a year or something while you're building a house.
Otherwise they have a thirty day limit, I believe, you can't stay in there for thirty days.
I mean, you can't, you can't stay in a trailer for more than fifteen days on a deal.
Other than if they campgrounds?
And campground, yeah, and then they, then they require you to spirit the trailer and stuff too.
Oh, that's a point.
Oh, wow. The city of Nez Perce has got something too, I found, their ordinance actually looks pretty good and looks like what might fit us, so.
So what are you looking at with the regulations there? Just out of curiosity.
Still kind of in work.
Still kind of, in, in the works, we haven't really.
We sandwiched two water ordinances into one, trying to clean them up. And then tried to put the, the fees and everything into a resolution so we don't have to mess with the ordinance every single time. You know, we need to do something, you know, because that's kind of problematic, so it's a work in progress. That's also how Lewiston does it, they have their water ordinance and then they've got a, a big old, a resolution with all their fees, you know, tampering with a hydrant, you know. If a business, they have a bunch of stuff we don't have, I, you know, I don't have to worry about cross-flow prevention for, you know, industry and stuff here, you know. Unless we had somebody move in here, and so then I need to put a provision in the ordinance that at least talks about that so we could address it in a reservation. But, yeah, but I've had no experience with, you know, running a city or government or anything. Just in the air force for twenty years and that's it, so.
Well, it sounds like you guys have a real challenge and I can appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you. We're, we're working to make it better, for sure. We got a great team, they all work together very well. Anybody else have anything? Yes, there's no gap.
I just have to say, I appreciate you guys because you listen to concerns and you try to find solutions for people instead of just blah, blah, bow shall, bow shall not, because that's so silly. So, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thanks very much.
She did have one more question, I write this letter, you guys receive it in today's, is it the next city council meeting? Do you make your decision or when do you make the decision?
We're, we're.
Extraordinary meeting.
We are going to be having a work session. We have to schedule it tonight, but we will get your situation taken care of before the Thursday.
Okay, that's what I will have to do, I will have to wait for the next meeting.
No, if you can get that letter to the, because by Monday, I'll have it done tomorrow. Okay, just put it in the Dropbox and we'll, we'll get it taken care of.
So I have one more question about the water system. Say the electricity goes off and you're unable to pump out of the creek. At the current usage rates, how long will the water intake last?
Generators, yeah, we've got generators on both of them.
Yeah, there's a generator down there and I check it every month, fire it up.
I've seen you down there.
Running stuff, yeah, so I checked that it, I fire it at least once a month. And the one up at the plant automatically fires up on its own and runs once in a while to go and check itself and stuff.
That's just a treatment plant, right?
Yeah, that runs, runs treatment plant and that one runs to pump the water, treatment plant and stuff, so. I think Nanti was a huge part in getting that all set up and stuff, you know, because I remember the early years, we didn't have that. So, and if we lost power, that was just outlawed. And I know that Nanti was a huge part of getting that emergency system set up at the place, yeah.
It's definitely nice, when we lose power, that one automatically kicks on and gives us enough warning to come down, plug this one in.
Yeah.
And so at that point, as long as anywhere has diesel around, we can still make water.
If we were completely down, we think we'd probably squeeze a week out with the time that we have at our current usage.
Yeah.
And that's.
And, and say we came down, and I, in my mind, I'm always prepared for the worst, okay? So say the worst, worst case scenario would be, we had to pump water out of the creek into our, your tank and feed it right directly out of the creek to you, at least you're still flushing your toilets.
Right.
Taking a bath or whatever, you may not want to drink the water for sure.
Oil water.
But at least you would have water flowing and stuff. So I know that this, this plant is capable of doing that, just pumping it right out of the creek to the tank and going right directly to you. So it may not be helpful, but I can, in my opinion, I'm thinking major flood, washout, nuclear explosion, the end of the world, you know, and stuff.
Zombies.
That, that's, that's opposed to my.
So does this plant filter, treat the water before it goes into the tank or after, as it comes out?
It, it gets filtered before it goes into the tank.
Yeah.
The tank is fully sanitary, stainless steel and everything. We add, I'll have to double check on the dates, but I think it was five years ago, we had a dive team come in. And was it about five years ago? Okay. And they did a full inspection in there, looks really good, anything that was noted was taken care of. That's actually really cool, they take full bleach and pour it over this guy in a full wet suit and he jumps in there. But, yeah, we're, we've got everything.
They dump them out of the tank and takes pictures of it all and everything and report that all back too. Because I worked with them in Orifino.
Yep.
Nice, too.
Yeah, so everything goes up into a raw water tank and then from there, it's pumped in through both, both skids. And then that goes straight over, you get your chlorine addition and that goes straight down to the reservoir. And then everything down here is gravity fed.
Yeah, it's all gravity fed from the tank.
Yep, so we don't have to worry about pumps if things goes down for distribution. It's just, as long as it stays up there and doesn't slide down, we're good.
Well, sorry about all the questions, we just.
Usually, usually we don't have any. I wanted to get this out there.
Yeah.
I like having people here.
I'm surprised how much people don't know how that plant works around here, so I'm all for making sure everybody's up to speed.
People probably don't even think about it.
Well, unless it's it, right, turn, turn to our flusher toilet, it's like it just, just in there, there's a little bit to it.
Yeah.
But.
So please feel free to share with anybody you see, they're more than welcome to come to council meetings, they're more than welcome to come and ask questions. And if, if I can't answer them, there's somebody around here that we will find that can answer your questions. Anybody else, before we move on?
Yeah, sorry.
All righty. So we are going to move on to old business.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had something, I should have said mine, sorry. So we're up on the end of May Street and it's something that's been at the back of my head since we moved up here. And I wanted to bring it up to the council for you guys to kind of mull over or see if we can find out why May Street was never pushed all the way to Elwood. If there's a reason it's not, because I'd really like to see if we could make that happen, like. It just, and I guess from my, from my perspective, being resident up there, Lulu Street between Pine and May is sketchy at best. And wintertime, it's almost inaccessible. And I know personally, we've needed ambulance service and our neighbors have needed ambulance service. And depending on the weather, they may or may not even be able to get to us. So, and I've been talking to Lee Roy to kind of look if there's something we can do. I mean, I don't mind putting the work in myself to help punch through or talk to the residents around there to see if it's something that they would like done or why it wasn't done or something like that. One, because I would greatly benefit from it, but I think as a whole, I don't, I, I don't see why not do it or whatever.
And it looks more achievable now that the old faucet place sold and they cleaned all that stuff up.
Yeah, Trace has done amazing work there.
That would go through that part of that.
So, yeah, so they cleaned it up to make access to that shop building that they're renovating. And that, that's what triggered it to pop up in my head again, it's like, why don't we just keep going? And we're talking about the mountain sliding off, more than enough dirt to help with some backfilling stuff if that helps. Like I said, I, I just wanted to throw that out there for you guys to mull over.
Anyway, to, to, to do that, we'd have to, it's ditched halfway.
Right.
But it needs to be ditched the rest of the way.
Right.
And then that, when dumped out onto Elwood, it's gonna have to be slowly cut, the culvert for it and stuff too. So we have to put in the culvert and then we'd have to take out quite a bit of material just before you get to Elwood.
Right. Does it sit higher where it comes off on the approach?
Yeah, it drops about five, yeah, maybe about four, five feet it drops from there down to the road.
And I can understand if it's not in the carts because of money, that, I would just like to know that that's. What's our road budget like?
And then gravel too.
Right.
And then snow powder.
I got you, I'll take care of that.
I'm not a idiot.
All righty. Can we move on?
Yep, sorry, I said, I'm done.
No, that's, all righty, moving on to old business. We have, we're gonna talk about delivering the suspensions, the rules for reading the ordinance of number one eighty-six and continuing in to either complete, plead it with a vote or.
That's a one minute sentence.
Yes, that's what, that's what I said.
Are the, are these the approved ones that they, that the lawyer was saying?
We're, we're only a little partway there. We're just gonna go to reading by click.
Right. Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I move that we suspend the rules to allow reading only the full title of ordinance one eighty-six.
I'll second that.
Rob seconded it? Okay, I want a roll call vote.
I'll know that for you.
No check, aye, yes.
Gina?
Aye.
So Tammy?
Milton?
To be the ordinance number one eighty-six by title.
Aye. All in favor, all, all, yes. Motion is passed by unanimous vote.
And one sixty is the fix to the cemetery, right?
Yes.
So we make motion on that with those?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'll read the, you may read the ordinance first or?
Go ahead and do, read that.
One eighty-six, okay, ordinance number one eighty-six, and the ordinance establishing mandatory water hookup fees, meter installation fees, and to the city of Peck, water system, associated water costs and delinquent accounts.
So that's now read into the record?
And that's now read into the record and.
So that's the first of three readings before we vote on it?
Yep. And the third reading, or the second reading will be at our next work session. And then the third reading will be at August, it's not, August thirteenth meeting, I think.
I want to put that resolution that I built onto the share plan just to make sure I got the right one.
Take my, my agenda?
No, I don't think so. I could, yeah.
No.
I'm not gonna do stuff like that.
I don't know.
I don't think it is, though. Okay, I'll do that. Madam Mayor, I move that we waive the reading of the full ordinance number one sixty and read only the full title.
Okay, that. Okay, Phil, make the motion. Tammy seconded the motion.
No check, aye.
Go back or aye?
Aye.
That's a one, okay. All unanimous vote. Motion passed. Okay.
And rather than sit here and read the full ordinance to everybody who's sitting out there dozing off while we do it, the, the ordinance aren't, the copies of the ordinances are available from the city office.
Yes.
So you can see what the actual text of the ordinance is.
Some of them are several pages long, so.
Sure. And they fix like one thing in one of them, so.
Ordinance number one sixty, and ordinance for the city of Peck, Nez Perce County, Idaho, for regulations for the Peck Cemetery and providing for an effective date. And that is it for old business.
Well, is that cemetery? So if you go up, is that Old Melrose?
Yeah, Old Melrose, Great Elwood here anyway, you go past Brian Dales or whatever and you're headed toward the water plant. It's just a little over a mile off to go here, yeah, on the left-hand side.
Go a couple switchbacks and then it's a sharp, right?
So we, we have, that's one cemetery there and then there's another cemetery at the top of Angel Ridge too. And then of course, there's a Melrose Cemetery that's put on prior, so. We actually have three, maybe four cemeteries, and the temple one at the top of Big Church. There's four cemeteries in there. But the city is the one in charge, and I have to maintain that cemetery up there by more than a day.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business. The first topic in new business is review engineering solicitation notice and decide on whether to publish currently.
Okay, so I updated the documents that we reviewed with SITA at our last work session. And in reading those, if we do make a motion to go forward, then that would mean tomorrow I would send the, I can take care of this part, send the notice to SITA to, that they sent to PTAC that lets, letting them know that we are going forward with this. And then Cheryl will send the information to Lewiston Tribune. And we would be publishing on Monday, July fourteenth and Monday, July twenty-first with the, our, the request for proposals due on Monday, July twenty-eighth at three PM. And we are requesting eight printed copies and a digital PDF. Cheryl has copies of the RFP, I just updated, like I said, I updated the documents based on our conversations. So with those dates, those published dates of the fourteenth, twenty-first, due date of the twenty-eighth, three PM. And then it will also include Cheryl's name or the city cell phone number. And then it will also include, um, Cheryl's name, or the city telephone number, and her email, and the city hall email as contact, um, for questions. And then Cheryl would be the one sending out the RFP, um, request for proposal to interested parties. So, um, if we are all in agreement, I'd do that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm definitely in agreement, are we able to send that directly to certain engineering companies too?
We are, as long, we are, as long as we continue to follow this other process.
We were allowed to. Right, I know, I know, I just wanna make sure we hit.
We can do both.
What I'm saying is, is I wanna hit as many as possible.
Yes, so.
Cause I don't trust them.
I would make a motion to go forward with, uh, advertising for engineer procurement on the July fourteenth and twenty-first with a due date for the RFP on July twenty.
I'll second that, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, and then, following that, um, we need to kind of talk about the, the next timeline, so in order to follow the procedure that SITA laid out for us. Uh, we would not review any of those proposals we receive until the due date. And then, um, we'd have to follow the, the procedure that they sent us where we all individually rank the proposals as a committee. We get together, discuss them, and then, um, determine the top selections and schedule interviews with those, those firms. And so, I would like to see if we can set our first selection committee meeting in which we would get together and discuss our rankings and decide on which ones we wanna interview. And this is before we, we make any final selection, that has to be done in a council meeting, so.
So, when is the, the last date for?
Twenty-first is the last published date here, is that the fourteenth through twenty-first, is that so?
Yeah, so we.
How long is it published for?
Two weeks, so they're due July twenty-eighth at three P M. And at that point is when Cheryl could gather them all and disperse them to our team, and we could re, we would review them individually and write them.
So published one week at a time then, okay?
Yeah. Yeah, and then, um, so sometime in August, and I know we have the budget meeting and the regular council meeting, um.
We have the budget meeting on the eleventh, and then we have, our city council meeting is on the thirteenth. We could, after we adjourn from the budget meeting, we can have a engineering application.
What time is the budget meeting, is it at?
Oh, actually, we could do it before, because the, the budget meeting, I think, is at six, six P M on the eleventh.
That's a Monday?
It's a Monday.
I will be back in my regular work, but I could meet as soon as three P M.
Three?
Yeah.
It shouldn't take, that gives us three hours.
If, if we have, if we've all collectively on our own reviewed, that gives us all, like, two weeks to review what we've received on our own, and then come to our meeting together to talk about it.
So, are we allowed to reach out to the companies, like, when we're doing our reviewing, like, if I see something independently on my own and I wanna call them, am I allowed to do that? No?
No, I think we have to, we look at our rankings and then as a group decide which ones we want to interview.
Okay, so questions?
And then we would interview them together.
Yeah, questions would be in.
I'm just making sure I'm not breaking any rules.
Well, and it's, if we, if any of you individually have questions, the, I think, and I can send it again, but what we gave you. Uh, SITA has like a whole, like, it's this, this document issuing, receiving, and ranking an RFP. That tells us all the steps we need to follow, and, and so that we can ensure we've done their process and potentially keep us under running for grant money.
So, do we have to make that decision in a regular council meeting?
We have to make the final selection in a council meeting.
So that would be the thirteenth then?
Well.
But, but you have to have a meeting before, so you can discuss every application, and you're, you're, you have to, on your own, do a, like a ranking page. And you rank what you think of that engineer company, and then we'll have a meeting, we'll share that, and then at the next council meeting, we will.
So you're talking about September council meeting?
No, if, if we do it, if we do it August eleventh before the budget meeting, we can vote on it on the thirteenth at the council meeting, right?
If, if we're, we might not be ready, so, so this is.
Yeah, cause that, that would take out our ability to interview.
Right, so.
Yeah, that's right.
The ranking is part of the SITA requirement for the grant to keep us.
So it would be September. Yeah, right, right.
So, the way they suggest here is we organize our committee, which is our, our whole group here. Um, after we've received their proposals, they're disseminating out, we select a date to meet. Um, each person, person has a copy of their proposals and has reviewed separately and scored them. Those scoring sheets will remain public record as well, if, in case that's requested. Um, and then, then we, in our group meeting, we review those, um, complete, I think, group ranking sheets. And then, um, we determine, like, you know, who our top pick to pick is to interview, and then we would schedule the interview. So, my guess is we won't be ready until September to vote it.
So how many do we interview?
Whatever we decide as a committee.
So, we only have one choice, we interview that one, if we like it, we take it?
Yeah, if we don't, then we advertise again maybe, or, you know, um.
I think this gives us enough stamp, when's the grant application due by for that month?
It, it opens in October and is due at the end of the year, so I would love for us to be.
I'd like to get it.
Ready in October with an engineer to say, let's fill out this grant application for DEQ. So, in my mind, if we have, we start meeting in August, we set interviews as quick as we can get them in. And then, maybe by our September meeting, for sure by our October meeting at the latest, we're voting, but I would, I would, I would think by September.
I'd say September, middle of September.
Yeah, cause October, when that, we kinda push it.
It is, yeah, just in case, cause I don't know what other.
We don't know how busy they are, you know, to help us get everything done, and so, so looking at August, how are we feeling about?
Do we wanna do it before the council meeting or after the council meeting, the weekend of the council meeting?
So the earliest we can do it is, what, we have the return dates to twenty-eighth of July?
Right, we, we can, we are not supposed to look at the proposals until their, the due date, so that we can fairly review them.
See them all, yeah.
And then we look at them individually, and then get together and rank them as a group, and then schedule interviews, so.
So if we did the, if we did the ranking meeting on the eleventh, that gives us almost two weeks from the time that they were turned in. So that gives us two weeks to read all the, all the applications, fine tooth, comb them, comb them, and draw ranking sheets, and then have a meeting.
Is that too much for the week? I, I don't know how much time the budget meeting usually takes, I don't, I'm new to this, and if, if we need to do it that week or push it out.
What, what if we did the ranking meeting the week before that?
Uh, two of us will not be in town.
That's okay. So two of us are gone before through the eighth?
Yes.
And I'm back in heavy work, so, at that point, but I could meet as early as three o'clock on whatever date.
I'm pretty flexible, so, I might be a single dad for part of that month.
About three o'clock before the budget meeting?
That's what I would say is, let's hit, I would say three thirty, three thirty or four o'clock before the budget meeting.
Before the budget meeting?
On the eleventh?
On the eleventh, okay.
Yes, on the eleventh, I would need a motion for that.
I make a motion to schedule the, um, selection committee meeting on August eleventh at four P M before the budget meeting. To review our, our P rankings and discuss, we lost that one.
I'll send you that.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, motion passed. Alrighty.
Oh, boy.
Kizzy, busy. Okay, moving on. Review possible options for speed control on the main street of Peck.
Rocket launch.
We gotta do something. We, uh, Tammy and I spoke to the Nezperce County Sheriff's Deputy that was sitting out here yesterday, I think it was, yeah, yesterday. And, uh, we had mentioned needing to do something for speed, and he was very adamant that speed bumps would probably be a nice thing to do. Uh, we have the, um, the, uh, rancher with the horse trailer behind him at seventy miles an hour, literally, the horse trailer is bouncing down the road behind him, by the main street.
Yes, I caught him yesterday, I, he's going so fast, I couldn't even get him.
He's on a moss bush.
Yes. And, you know, we've got, especially right now, kids are out of school.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I have a love-hate relationship with speed laws, but, yeah.
Yeah, me too, but we gotta do something for safety for the community.
And I researched some of them today, and they range anywhere from fifty-five dollars to two hundred and eighty dollars.
Trying to stick in the rubber ones?
Yeah, yeah, so, snowballing.
Solar removal, and in the winter time, we would lose our alley, so I can snowball.
Yeah.
But, I mean, this road out here is not the city's responsibility, it's the county's responsibility, but we plowed anyway.
That's cause the county's really good at plowing.
And, yeah. And my idea was that, um, you know, after talking to the sheriff, or one of the deputy sheriffs. I, it kinda crossed my mind that, uh, the next time the commissioner's here at our meeting, we should, uh, maybe, actually, I could call him and set up a meeting and see if we can discuss with him and maybe county and.
Yeah, I mean, well, hey, if it's not, if it's not necessarily, if it's a main thoroughfare and it's the county, I would love to see them put the bill forward.
Right, yeah, so something, something seriously gotta be done, because, you know, like today, there was.
Or at least provide it for us, and then we can put it back down.
We can regulate it if you see.
Yeah.
So, were they with county on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll talk to Joe and.
Yes, yeah.
All I know is, is we gotta do something, because.
Did we ever hear anything back, who do I need to harass about that school crossing thing?
That's a, that's a grant thing, it's gonna take years.
That was, that was, yeah.
Yeah, I know, but I thought they would have like a rack and stack or something, I'll figure out, LTAC, right?
No, that was, uh, uh, Nezperce County Department, uh, what was his name?
I'll find it.
I think they said that was like a year and a half to two years before, but I thought they were supposed to do, I mean, I wanna answer something.
Yeah. Okay, and we'll get with Joe and see what we can work out. Okay, another information, number three is review new door hanger shut-off notices. That is, uh, got this anyway? Um. So that we are giving plenty of notice if we have to do a water shut-off for, it, uh, not paying their bill. We will hang one of these on their door on Monday, and it will tell the ti, the date, the time that the water will be shut off. If the payment's not made, or arrangements to make payments on the payment, on the bill, is not made by a certain time, their water will be shut off on Wednesday. So we give them three days to come into the office and make arrangements for the water bill. Um, Anthony and Leroy will be the ones using these. So, it's just another way of trying to communicate before we just go out.
Uh, it's already an awkward situation, but that is nice, especially with the city running it three days a week, it gives people at least notice of what's coming.
Right, what's coming, it gives them three days, seventy-two hours to pay the, pay the bill.
Or come in and make.
We're coming to make arrangements for payments. So.
So is that, um, an action?
That is information.
Or if you use those?
Okay.
Or if you do use something like that?
Well, what Orpino would do is they'd just have, I'd go up and knock on their door, you know, and talk to them in person and stuff.
Yeah.
And then, uh, if I couldn't get a hold of the city hall, would be calling them, stop, but either way, I got a hold of them, or the city hall got a hold of them before we shut their water off. And like I said, it was usually a couple days ahead of time, stuff, you know? And then, when I, he'd go shut their water off, I would go up and try and get a hold of them, and I, and I'd tell them, fill your bathtub full of water, and then, as I turn your water off.
Yeah. You all ready? Any other questions? Uh, moving on to number four. Uh, buying a hundred dollars worth of soil to finish fixing up the flower beds underneath the trees along Main Street before the Peck City Festival in August.
I got dirt.
You got dirt?
I got dirt.
You got some?
Not, they're talking about like, hogging stuff?
Uh, yeah, I don't know if it's clodding.
Dirt and then, um, put like cedar chips on top, to keep it from.
Mulch over the top.
Well, mulch.
Cedar would kill it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Metch, I think, will hold, mulch holds the water.
The moisture, the moisture longer.
We can go over to, uh, Steve White's and grab some of that if you wanna look at it too, I'd never have Doug into his pile, look at it, but we can look at it and see what that consists of.
I've got a bunch of wood chips.
Oh.
As long as they, as long as they're cedar, we're good.
It's not, it was, uh, red fur or something like that, yeah, cause they, they charge the tree guys to dump when they chip up branches. So if you want wood chips for gardening or something, get a hold of, uh, probably any of them, Rogers Tree Care.
The, the Palmer's have offered as well.
When he was doing all that work for Elaine, um, I had him come look at a tree, and he just dumped his, I got a bunch of wood chips, free, free.
Yeah, Mary and Graham Palmer have also offered to me.
Alrighty, moving on to number five. This is an action item, decide on a date for the July work session. Um, I think we were looking down to the line. I will be.
Are you guys all going on vacation or something, if that was still on?
Not me.
You guys going to Mexico?
Yeah, no. No, uh, we're having a family reunion in Montana, so it's not gonna be fun at all. I might be back early.
Me, in Boise, these days.
From August, first of August.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven? Yeah, so, if you wanna swap a weekend or whatever, cause that's my weekend.
I have to go watch the work.
Gotcha. So where is the in Boise?
And then we also have a family reunion.
Something ours, if plans, let me know. Yeah. We'll figure something out.
Twenty-first, twenty-second, or twenty-third.
Get with Green and see.
That's what I was gonna say.
We have, we have anything to do. Okay.
Like I said, uh, my wife's got some, okay, that's the weekend.
If you invite on the calendar up there too, when I'm up there, I can.
And I'm flexible.
Took a very, very long.
Justin Anthony, is it twenty-first, twenty-second, or twenty-third? I think it's the twenty-first, does twenty-first work for you guys?
Works for me.
I'll pencil it in.
I propose that we do a work session on July twenty-first at nine A M.
Okay, can I get a second?
Who's doing breakfast?
All in favor?
Aye.
You, you are.
First I'm gonna ask.
Cool? No, it's July twenty-first at nine A M. Okay, and Anthony's cooking breakfast.
Last summer's.
I'll have the door locked for you, Kate.
I have a key.
Oh, that's right, you do. Alrighty. Moving on to number six. Uh. Announce the resignation of Cindy Nichols.
Oh, God.
Uh, as city clerk and treasurer, Cindy is no longer with the city. That is that for that.
We're gonna be checking on it, though.
Yes, yeah. Um, now we go into an executive session, if we wanna take a few minutes break, and then we'll read, and come back for a moment.
Are you kicking me out?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. You, we're in the restroom, if you got home, meeting is adjourned.
Unadjourned.
Unadjourned. We're zooming at eight oh five.
Or Ren's gonna be checking your numbers. I'll take a copy of that one. Huh? Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Moving on to, uh, city employee briefings. Um, like I was saying, I will take over the city clerk and treasurer's update. We need a scanner for, a new scanner for city hall, just the scanner, not the printer scanner.
Do you wanna borrow mine until we get one?
Um, well, we need one for us and for the water plant, so they can scan all their documents and that need to be scanned in because of the blowout up there, we don't wanna risk losing any thing damaged by water.
Okay, my bad.
Pretty hard to get.
But I'm pretty sure it's gonna happen again.
Oh, okay, yeah, I know, I know what you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I have not priced him.
Amazon Prime Days.
Oh, it is.
That one that I use to scan the facilities plan, it's, it, it went great.
Like, is there some really slick ones out there?
They're new, I don't know, like fifty bucks maybe, I don't know. It was cheap, and it does double sided. You just, the only thing I will say about these is they're a little wonky on their software interface sometimes.
And that's what I say, I, I would say that I would try to go a little better quality because you guys are gonna be scammed.
Yeah.
Like, it's not a household doing receipts and stuff, like you guys got some paper.
I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do all of them in.
If it's spend a little bit more for the quality, I think that's something to pay attention to when you guys are looking at.
Yeah, because our, our printer scanner right now is like on its last leg.
It is.
It squeals, it leaves lines all over the paper.
I've looked at it, it's, it's time for a new print, major printer for.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, it, it works just fine until invoice day.
So you need it.
And it's gonna cost more to maintain it than to replace it.
Yeah, it is.
So is it worth getting a new printer, a printer scanner?
No, I, they need to get a good quality high-speed printer, and then they need a specific document scanner. And the water plant needs one too.
They keep them, they're suggesting we keep them separate, not by.
I, I, I would, I mean, if you get an all-in-one, that's whatever, but it's like, if you guys didn't get like a, and, and I'm thinking industrial, we don't need one that big, but you get one that just can churn out copies and just burn copies as quick as you need them, and then you don't worry about it.
We give you all the organs.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're pretty straightforward, and then like for us, there's a lot of stuff I like to make digital.
Yeah, we, we really need to go through every drawer one by one, just put it through.
For finance documents and stuff, because if somebody puts in a records request for the, uh, let's say, the IOG account for whatever, we don't have to scan through the book.
Or our new resolution.
Or our new resolution, so, yeah, we need a good one.
Go scan this tomorrow.
I see, so how much would something like that do you?
I've seen, I mean, I've seen him as much as like three hundred bucks.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm looking at right now.
The scanner?
Yeah, and it's a legit document, and what it does is, it's almost like an iPhone, like you take a picture of it and it makes it a document form.
Yeah.
Almost like an editable PDF version, and you can label it, you can move it around, and then you can just drag and drop it in the files that it needs to go in.
Yeah.
Um, and I think some of them a little bit more high-tech, it will automatically send them, like it'll start learning what you're putting in there and put it in the.
So you would want that in preference to maybe something to take a stack and feed them to?
A hundred.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, you wanna do, it's, it's painstaking to do it that way, but then you can ensure your quality.
Okay.
You're getting what you want, the documents you want, and then you can pull out like the pages that you don't need or whatever. Um, it, it is tedious, but I think.
Pages you don't need, meaning?
Uh, blank pages or spacers or whatever.
Some of them like, I have a, I think mine's Epson, mine actually might be a little bit more expensive. I think I have this Canon. And it, and it'll auto detect empty pages and omit them from the document.
There you go.
The only thing I didn't like about it was the saw, and maybe they're all kinda like that, and they probably are, cause they're all proprietary. The whole organization thing, you have to, before you put, put the paper in it, you have to get in there and tell it, hey, I want you to turn this into a P. It gives you some what, like PDF or whatever.
I like.
No, i- i- it is, you just have to get used to working with it.
Yeah, it's one of those, yeah.
That's what I, that's what I did for that facilities plan, and I mean, if I would've had enough feeder on it. I mean, I was kinda, I was doing appendix in like chapter at a time, but I think I actually could've just stuck that whole thing in there and it would've, I just would've ended in there to catch the pages.
Yeah.
And it, it did.
Because in, in all honesty, the, um, the new clerk having experience, the stuff that gets done in that office.
Yeah.
Should be done in its.
Right.
There is, would be time.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm telling you right now, with the water, doing the water bills on the computer, and I know that it's a new program, we've had a couple of mistakes, but it was taking Cindy up to three days to do a water, the water bills. It takes less than three, four hours on QuickBooks.
Yeah, I love it.
By the way, I like the new format too, that lists out sanitation, chef, adds it back in.
That's really nice.
Makes it clear.
Yeah, that's like a quick.
We should have gotten our.
It's, the, that has the due date at the end of the month, is that, is that a page? Okay, cause it used to be due the twentieth.
Yeah, right, and we, we, we bantered, I mean, is that something, an office procedure like that, is that something, cause we talked about it, that needs to come to city council?
I wouldn't think so, if you're happy with the end of the month, that's.
Well, the thing about it is it causes a lot less problems, actually, it has caused less problems. People are up in thing, people are always late.
And hopefully, yeah, as we can get this up and running on our online QuickBooks. Bills can be paid.
That'll be the end of the week.
They can be paid right now, they've had the technology to actually pay it online for free for a long time.
Cause this is the only thing I could ever be late for, because everything else is off.
Yeah, you know, I've said that, and, and.
I mentioned it when I first moved here.
My daughter too.
Cindy was like, nah.
This is why, I think with.
That's kinda what check I write.
Yeah, and that's, what are they saying?
So, so when, and, and I, I'm now, and I know I keep putting them out, but it's just because I have.
I wonder where that's leaking.
Am I even gonna go with all this further?
I wonder where that leak is.
Online, so what we'll have to do though is we'll have to call the bank and see what they charge, if they charge anything, to have people be able to pay their bill online, cause it's gonna go directly into our bank.
Right.
You know, we're not gonna deposit, cause it's gonna save a lot.
Are you going to have a separate account that it goes into?
No, it should go straight into water and sanitation.
In the water.
We can do the, the, uh, the, uh, transfer for sanitation.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, we do that already.
Right.
We do it already. Order checks?
No, do the transfer.
You're supposed to, yeah, we got.
Getting punchy.
Yeah, well, and it's supposed to be do, done in a monthly manner, so that when your paperwork comes out, you have that, you know?
Well, I just noticed that, I didn't, you know, really have much thought about it one way or another, I'm just curious. But I think end of the month is fine, if it works for you.
Yeah, it's actually.
It's working for the people.
Yeah.
I like it, it was less payday.
About to say, it was a weird day, probably fallen right between people's paychecks or people that get paid monthly.
The people that are consistently late, you know, I'm talking to.
Interesting, that's nice.
Well, there you go, makes sense, that makes sense for us, uh, yeah.
So with the, the document scanner and the printer, I can do some research.
I think you're, I think you're looking at two fifty to three hundred dollar.
That's where I'm thinking.
For the scanner, based on what I just looked at.
I sent you two links, uh, one with a tray, one without, to the, uh, PEC one over there, they're on the deals right now.
Oh, they're on there.
On deal day.
How much are they?
Uh, two thirty and two fifty.
I'm probably looking at the same one.
Yeah.
And I think, I think you might.
Organize and see if like.
I think this Canon image formula for two, uh, thirty is the one that I have.
I like Canon.
And it scans quick.
What are you looking at, Justin?
Uh, Epson.
Epson's gonna be the other one, Canon and Epson are everything.
Would, would you, would you prefer, as far as brand goes, I think both.
I've used them both.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
One I got.
I had them on my Epson the other day with the software.
Yeah.
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 Okay, Canon it is.
Yeah.
So, but now we have to talk about a printer.
That's all, I hate printers, they're all trash.
We just need, like, so basically, we wouldn't, so what we were looking at for a hundred bucks was a printer scanner, so now you can spend three hundred bucks, how much is just a laser printer?
I would just get, I would, I, my opinion with the multi-use ones, I mean.
I don't like them.
I mean, usually they always come with a scan feature, right, but, I mean.
That's what I mean, let's look at just.
Definitely want something that has a big thing, a toner, that you can shake up and get a couple more.
I love that about laser printers, you know, when it says out.
Wouldn't it be nice if we could get one that uses the ink cartridge, cause we don't have black, but we still have colored cartridges over there for like the one that we have. But it's.
I doubt if that's gonna happen, just because that's how a lot of them make their money, they're not gonna make, yeah, they're not gonna make ink interchangeable.
But I think we could send it back to Staples and it's.
Could be.
Get a refund.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Oh, yeah, I bet you could.
For the ink that we would need.
Yeah, that's, that's a hard one, because the office printers are expensive.
They are.
But I don't think you need one industrial size, but if you guys need to churn out fifty copies, it shouldn't be a problem. We shouldn't be crossing our fingers.
I just bought a.
Yeah.
Got me on speed dial, like, it's making that noise again.
I, uh, just bought a laser printer that I wanted to have, carry around in a case for, for doing ham radio exams. And, uh, it was, it seemed like it was under a hundred dollars, but it, it's just a laser printer only, and it, it doesn't take a big stack of paper either.
Right.
And maybe, and maybe, yeah. Maybe you could try to save some money by looking at like the, the, the biggest or the, the high-speed residential that they make.
Right.
I think that might work for what we're doing, um, because i- i- I think it'll be the same thing, right? Cause they'll sell it to you super cheap, but then the ink's gonna be four or five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So, but, but whereas if you go commercial grade, that's when they're like, they start adding zeros to it for some reason.
So what's, I'm looking at. An HP Laser Jet Chrome, it's just a printer.
Sure.
If, honestly, I would say call Orifino, City Hall, like, hey, what kind of printers are you guys using?
Oh, here, oh, hold on, I got you right now, let me text him, he's off work.
But you know what I'm saying, like.
Oh, yeah.
See, see what some of the other municipalities are using, like call Nesspier's or the police department, hey, what kind of office printers are you guys running?
Day three.
Do you like them?
Well, I, I, actually too, because we used to, I'd done a lot of printing.
And shit, some of them might have a contract.
Yeah.
Where they can hook us up with something, I, I'm just throwing that out there for information, cause I'm gonna have to work on it too, but if.
Are you talking about for maintenance?
Yeah.
I'm asking right now.
And like I said, I know we don't need anything that extravagant, but.
But we wanna get something so small that we overuse it.
I feel like I said, the one you got, that's why you're having that problem, that is too small for what you guys have to do.
What we'll do is, we'll, we, we can't, we can't make a decision or approve this to buy it tonight, so we will, we'll work through this. We will work together and try to come up with the best.
You have your prime days.
Oh, they always got prime, just wait next week, they'll be.
At Prime Days, they just get the original price and then say it's lower.
There's a whole website to track that.
I, yeah, I've seen.
Like buy it, like buy the scanner down or something.
Hmm?
Yeah, if it's under five hundred, you guys.
Yeah, that scanner will be under five hundred. And, but that would only be one, right, we can only buy one.
The ones for the water.
You can get, you can get ours later, but it's not a priority.
Borrow mine.
Buy one, buy one.
Yeah.
I, I think City Hall needs it more than we do, but it would be nice to get one up there sooner than like.
And just use our allotment.
Yeah, I, I don't want to wait a month or two.
What it, if, cause that thing does scan, do you have one at all up there?
It won't scan, when you feed it through the scanner.
We have something that resembles a printer.
But what I'm saying is that if we got one right now, we could send our old one up there until we buy another one.
We have a printer up there.
Oh, you do?
But I was, I'm looking to get like, like old, old documents and hidden piles of papers that Amber had, invoices, stuff that nobody knows about or I don't even know the relevance of, I would like to start digitizing that stuff and get it out of the plant in case we have a, a water issue, paper and water don't seem to.
Well, and chances are, once you start going through most of that stuff, you probably don't need.
And that's it too, it's like, we get to where we don't need this whole stack or this whole file, like.
Cause I feel like a good laser printer for the office is getting cost about one hundred bucks.
Correct.
Yeah, you're gonna be in the five hundred plus range.
But I did just, I just, I did just ask the city, uh, he said espionage, and then he's laughing at me.
Nice.
But like, I've never heard of.
Classified.
Yeah, he was calling me about some city, uh, yeah.
Okay, so we got the scanner and the printer thing figured out. Um, I also wanted to announce Milk and I will be going to the Nesspier's, um, it's, uh, the contribution to the twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty Regional Economic Development Strategy Meeting.
That sounds like something Rob and I went to recently.
Yeah, well, they're providing lunch.
Chips and salad.
I just think that I've been so stuck in the office, I haven't been going to any of this stuff.
Oh, yeah.
And it's free.
Yeah.
So I think we need to get out there and let them know we're going.
Where's that?
It's in Lewis.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, we'll be going to that.
They're, they'll have some good information, it's just peace in what actually will apply to us and, and is worth hunting for.
Yeah.
Alrighty, so I'll get that back to you.
Yeah.
That's pretty much all I had for, uh, the city clerk treasurer, we have nothing, I think we are just about all caught up on all the tax. Tax stuff. We still have to, Tammy's gonna work on writing some more, please give us grace letters for a couple of more that we just received that is penalties. So back in twenty. Yeah, so she's gotten, gotten us out of, of all the penalties.
Talking about money, so, nevermind.
So.
How's the hunt for the new clerk going, you guys getting some midway on that?
The new what?
Clerk.
What new clerk?
City clerk.
Oh.
Where the fuck am I?
We just talked about that.
You fell asleep at the plant.
Was I in the bathroom?
Hey, Leroy, is that where your leak's at, that green panel?
Yeah, so, yeah, we're, we're getting closer.
Some good candidates come in, or at least some.
Extremely good, so good that it's.
That's good to know.
They didn't want to make a decision.
Oh, that's, boy, that's good.
That's good, that's a good problem to have.
Yeah, so I will close with that, I don't think we, I told them about the, uh, taxes that we have to write letters to, to see if we can get out the penalties.
We got more.
Was that twenty twenty-three? Oh, twenty twenty.
What, what's causing all this?
They didn't do it.
Their taxes, and then now that, now that they're.
Just like they didn't do the audits.
Now that they're.
How people do that?
I don't either.
I know, the only thing that makes me, like, the more we got in so like they would do one every once in a while.
An audit or pay taxes?
No, pay taxes.
The nine forty-one payable taxes what.
Is it just that there was too much going on, too busy to turn?
No, I don't doubt so, I, I, so.
Okay, cities have to pay taxes like regular humans do, right?
Well, it's a payroll, it's a payroll.
When you get your paycheck, you see the federal social security and all that, so we have to take care of that, we have.
So, so they would hold it, send it in?
But they weren't sending it in.
They weren't sending the paperwork, the money was there, however.
Okay.
The, I believe the nine forty-one that we're getting a penalty on is the one that they did that they did wrong.
Okay.
So I'm gonna write another letter, because now it's not in the hands of that one guy anymore. Oh, we did get the state of Iowa, Tammy, too. All in one way, yeah.
Good job.
Yeah, cause those were small.
I think you should make some potato salad about that.
Potato salad over that.
This is terrifying.
Yeah, it is, but you know what, I, you know, a lot of people.
Tammy's on it.
When the when when you call the IRS. Hi, this is. You know, you gotta be nice and and you, if they, if they, I don't even know how to put it.
They like their job as much as you like them doing their job?
So like they're a very big organization, okay, I mean, there's they're they are everywhere. So when you call them up and you've got a name on a letter, you can't just call the IRS and say, can I talk to Carol?
Right, yeah, yeah, I got you, I understand.
You know, which is what, so so now it's anyway, so now that went from, uh, they don't know what her name is, Carol Brown. So she got them all and then she sends them over to a different place and it made, so now we have to deal with a whole nother department. We never got any of the penalties or fees, right now they're really small, but I would rather write the letter telling them, explaining them what happened, what's going on. This is what, and and try to get those waived.
And they're penalizing us because the paperwork was wrong or they didn't?
Well, this is one of the, I believe this penalty is one of the nine forty ones that they actually did that was wrong. Cause when we went over the ones that I did, the lady called and went over, there was only two mistakes on it, and they were.
And but the the ones that we are, that we've already done, returns and the paperwork was never done on.
Yeah, it was never done.
So and what kind of red flagged us was they quit accepting our payments.
Oh, for when you guys took over and started trying to uh.
Yeah. They quit taking our payments because they had all this money, but there was no paperwork.
Oh geez, okay.
And the thing about us, the payroll service was sending the money, not just us.
Right, if the payroll service had not been paying the taxes, the taxes would not have been paid either.
Okay.
QuickBooks is the only reason why the money went to the feds and the state.
And I've been looking every month since we've been with Patriot, they're on it, they have been sending, they they do our step.
So is it is it clearing up pretty quick now?
Well, it clears up and then we get hit again.
Well, I mean.
I mean, it's.
Eventually it will run out of years.
Yeah, and we're gonna be selective enough with this new city clerk that will pay attention to detail, because what I'm telling everybody out looks like. I know there's so many things I've said I want to do, but basically when I go in there, I'm cleaning up stuff that when I wasn't there. So.
Okay.
Which is good, because that's another thing, I just think we need somebody that pays attention.
I just need to know if I need to put everything in my wife's name, cause I might be going away for a while.
It's not on us, it is definitely not on us.
Definitely not on me, I have. I keep, you guys give me money and I try to get it.
I think I think the recorder got your level of ignorance, Rob. I think you're in the clear.
I don't even know math. I used to build bombs, that would be. Seriously.
A little bit different too, because the IRS and them, they they are a little easier on when you're the working municipality than they are working the.
Like it.
So.
Still yet.
In fact, we just got a check from them.
Scary.
It is. So one of the nine forty ones I did that never got done was actually overpaid, so we just received an eight hundred and twenty three dollar check.
Nice.
From the IRS, because they.
Documents scanners.
They don't do that to me.
I know.
I know.
Yeah, you don't get the money back, that's not.
But seriously, when Cheryl calls me and says we got another thing from the IRS, my gut just sinks.
And then when you get three in one day.
Oh yeah.
It's like, oh god.
It almost be a drinking game.
The last one says they're on the way, I don't.
I think the letters from the IRS, we've gotten ten in the last couple of weeks and all of them say, we've changed your address. Most of them.
All right, Leroy, you're moving along.
Just get scared.
Okay, the park.
That's why our grass is in green, it's just all in one spot.
Ah, yeah, this is where the water leak is at, and when it leaks, it makes a pond there. That's how much water it takes to go ahead and make that spot green.
Oh my, Atlanta.
Yeah, so in order to cure this, we need to get some nitrogen on that ground and stuff to make the the grass boom a little bit. So I talked to uh Joanne at Green Things, she's amazing.
Oh, they're great, yeah.
So I just take her pictures of any problems I have with plants or something like that, and she she knows what the hell to do, and she'll even come out. And she has before came out and then looked at stuff for me and stuff, but right now we need to drop some nitrogen on that park. I don't know when last time it's been done anyway, but we just put a straight nitrogen on it, the first number on your chemicals, you know, triple sixteen or something. The first number is nitrogen and stuff, so we need to go ahead and hit it with nitrogen right now, that will help green the park up. Without using a ton of water to make it happen and stuff.
And that was a forty nine zero zero?
Yeah, that's just one of them, I mean, yeah, there's lots of them, they're thirty two zero zero or whatever you wanna call it, no matter what, just need the. Number zero zero, so I need to get permission from you guys or something to go ahead and purchase some fertilizer from either. Um, Joanne or wherever I can find it at.
What's the cost on that for that entire park, just curious?
It depends how much you wanna put down, yeah, I mean, I I don't know.
Will it burn it if you put a whole lot at one time?
Yeah, so.
So you probably gradually do it a couple of times.
Yes, exactly, if you do it intermittent, like say if you do like every two weeks, you know, and you would need to go ahead and give it a pop, you know, and stuff. That would be the most you would want to do every two weeks. In order to turn that green again and stuff, I mean, it's just so sad, and I'm bonging water to it now at the end, thinking maybe it would have greened up. It hasn't, it looks like I've got the water turned off.
Oh, yeah.
So anyway, thinking the the nitrogen will help fix that and then along back anyway, so I I mean, I just. It's embarrassing to me.
Yes.
To have the park looked away to that, it really is, I mean, I always prided myself on the Orfino Park, how badass I made it grow. But I didn't have to mow it, so I did.
Is there, is there a way we could flood here and do that with the setup we have? To get a little bit more water?
You know, if we pulled out of the creek.
Yeah.
I'd flood that thing like a lake every every couple of nights, you know, and stuff, and then, yeah, you wouldn't need any fertilizer, cause there's so much nitrogen in that creek. That we would never have to fertilize and stuff, yeah, I mean, if if you do a sample test on that water in the creek there, the nitrogen levels are so high. Because all these farms around and stuff, and look at Winchester Lake, what they're going through.
Yeah.
That's because all the nitrogen in that field, they're feeding that lake and just destroying it and stuff.
Just, I mean, cause they just set the pump up and everything to pull out of the creek at the fire station. If we wanna, I know it's a little bit more labor intensive, but. We could get, we could get some direct creek water.
I said that for years, just to set up a pump down there right by that old fire station at the bridge, in fact, when they did the do the bridge project. I was thinking about some way that I could sneak a two inch line down into that creek and stuff when they do it, you know, to bring it over to the park and and.
Would you be able to water that park with a tender?
Well, yeah, and we have before, we did, I know in the past, we did fire training and stuff, and we used the park and the schoolyard as our fire training. And we came in and we just doused it, you know, stuff.
Oh, so and I, well, we've got the go ahead to use the crash truck and the fire, they have a pump in the creek coming up, but.
But we can't drive in the park.
Right, you can't, that's what I'm saying, you don't have the capability to, with hoses and stuff, to run from the tender. To spray the whole entire.
Yeah, out of the creek and onto it, probably do something like that too.
But just to, just to help, I don't wanna take away what what you're wanting to do with the fertilizer, this.
But yeah, we just, I don't know when last time it's been fertilized, it needs to be fertilized, period, that's always true, so.
Let's do it.
I don't care, and it's just a little bit of fertilizer and we see what it does, and then we can go from there.
Can we do liver at the same time?
Oh yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
So how much uh that nitrogen fertilizer can you get with a hundred bucks? Enough, or is it, that's where I'm going, that's, it costs thousands at all?
No, 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 it probably would be like, I'd say, why don't you budget me like two hundred bucks for fertilizer for it now, apply that, see what happens. And we'll go from there, see what what it does.
I think that's.
I'd make a motion to give away two hundred dollars to buy nitrogen.
I don't think we need to if it's under five hundred dollars.
Yeah, a five hundred?
Right, you can.
You could give them a like a five hundred bucks.
Yeah, for maintenance, we did, yeah. Oh, so that's what I was saying.
I like you just need to figure it.
Figure out how much it costs.
Okay.
And I I would start with like a hundred dollars to see how far that gets you, if you gotta go back and get another hundred dollars worth.
Okay, I'm good, I'm good, cause like I said, I can't get up and all on at once, so let's just give it a little shots and see what happens.
See if it works, let's see if it starts bringing it back, I mean, there's no sense in us buying a whole lot and then if it's not working.
And then, of course, just do the leak there, I need to get that fixed anyway and stuff, that'll help distribute the water, I'm allowed to sort the park and stuff like that, yeah, so.
I'll just let me know I can help you work on that.
Green things, okay, uh. The uh.
Now we're buying an excavator. Oh, sorry.
So uh, it doesn't look like we're gonna get a road grader anytime soon.
Yeah.
And you, the streets look pretty decent, hot holes and stuff, it's cause that maintainer.
Oh yeah.
Whenever it rains and I get enough moisture in it, I drag that thing up and down the street.
Did you do it yesterday? Didn't you do it the day before yesterday?
No, no.
Did it work on the roads?
It's been a couple of weeks.
Oh.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, I magged, so I put six hundred gallons of mag down there and stuff, which it didn't look like I did, you know, and stuff, but it's.
It's pretty solid, yeah.
It's there, you know, it's in the ground, it's there and stuff, so if we get another rain and I go out there and I run that maintainer down that thing. That's gonna work that mag up again and refresh it, you know, and stuff, and so that maintainer is gonna do amazing, in my opinion, it's gonna do amazing things. For what we got going on and stuff.
And that's the one you built?
Yeah.
Thank you, now didn't you need something to go on that and get new blades?
So if it 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 does a social job right now and stuff, you know, um, uh, if I had new blades on that thing.
Would it help if it weighed more at all?
Yeah, it weighed more, but right now the the main thing would be um getting some blades.
Oh, there you go.
So what I got on there right now is some used road grader blades on them, they're wore out, okay, um, and they're they're five eighths thick, okay? So these blades here are half inch thick, that means the thinner the blade area, the more likely it's gonna tread into the ground and stuff, okay? If I had brand new blades put on that maintainer thing, um, it's probably all that tractor could do to pull it around after that, you know, and stuff. And if, like I say, if we need to throw some more weights on the front of it to make it cut and stuff, you know, and like I say, when we get a good rain, good water hit. And and I keep using that thing on there, I don't think we'll ever see the roads like they were last spring, I mean, that was a disaster, you know? And if I had had that maintainer back then in the spring, I could have made them just cherry them just apart, yeah, so I'm saying if I got new blades on that thing. Um, that I can make that thing really work good, yeah.
And with that maintainer, can we work the side roads?
I make, I wanna work the side roads, I wanna work all this shit out here, I wanna work anything that's crap, yeah, so. Um, the parking lot down there where the campers RVs at, I'd like to drag that thing back and forth through there, and and what that does, that churns up that rock. In there and stuff, and spreads it out, and it'll kill the weeds and then wipe everything out too, and it'll look, it'll make it look nice, so. So this is gonna, we're looking at probably about four hundred dollars for blades, and I'm trying to find a place to buy them cheaper, I went in, talked to Nesburge County. Asked them where they got their blades from and stuff, and so I'm trying to find places I can buy them cheaper, this is Amazon, yeah, yeah, so. Um, it was three hundred dollars for the blades, a hundred dollars for shipping, for these blades, right, so, um, like I said.
I mean, road grader is way more expensive.
Oh yeah, for sure, yeah, and the only reason we really need a road grader isn't to rebuild the road, right, the water plant road. Or maybe pull the edges in or whatever, or for ditching, but in all reality, we really, we can get by with this maintainer thing. And it'll do a fantastic job, and the only problem I got is the water plant road, you know, and stuff, yeah, so. I don't know how to repair that, I mean, I can go up there and work on it for a week, it was a backhoe or if I had a road grader, it could be.
Yeah, cause the water's cutting the ribbons in it.
Yeah, yeah.
That like, at some point, we could look at renting equipment for a week to fix the water plant road, like however often, I don't know, I.
No, once, yeah, yeah, exactly, but once that, once that um water plant road was, say, built the way it's supposed to be. With a crown in it and ditches in certain spots on it and stuff.
And then you mag it?
Yeah, then we would, we would never have to touch it again, that maintainer could go up and down and keep it all correct and everything, you know? The problem with that up there and Lulu Street is that the water's running down the middle of the damn street, you know, and stuff. If we can get a little bit of a crown there, so the water's run off the street instead of down the street, then we're not making a ditch in the street and stuff anyway, so.
Yeah, I don't want.
I think this maintainer thing would really work good for us anyway and stuff, so what I've done with it so far, I think it's been amazing.
Marion Street, sure is.
I meant to say Marion Street.
I mean, it's better than it has been since I've been here.
I've got it, is our tractor working?
Okay, tractor.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I went, no, no, I went through the tractor a little bit and stuff, you know, we have uh an oil pressure problem with it when it gets hot, okay? Um, but it seemed at the higher RPMs and stuff, I don't, it seems like it's setting up oil pressure and it's working all right. I would like to pull that front end loader off of that tractor and stuff, just so it's easier to manipulate, right? It's a pain in the ass that loader on it, and the loader is shit.
Useless, it doesn't work.
Yeah, it's shit.
Cause I I've got a, like a three point, I think I have, I gotta go look at it, I'll take some, I have a tractor blade. At my property that I'm not able to use anyway, but it, I think you can move it in pin positions and can this big blade.
That's what's on there right now, and that's what they did use, it was just a blade to try and maintain the street and stuff, and uh. It's just a challenge to use that, just uh, um. My maintainer thing, if you see, I was gonna.
Yeah, it cuts it and puts it in the center.
Yeah, it does, it cuts it, it cuts it, and then it spreads it and stuff, so it's actually, what it's doing is just rolling that rock back and forth a little bit, you know, and stuff. And spreading it out, that way I can go down them edges and pull them edges in, and it works that stuff, back and forth instead of leaving slumps. And that's how the maintainer works, it cuts it, cuts it, rolls it, rolls it, and then let it spread it out, it's nice, yeah. And we need those fines from the edge, that's what bonds the road and stuff, oh, you have the gravel is bonding it, it's the the clay dirt. And sand in the gravel that makes the the road bond and stuff, you know, so, and that's also what makes the mag look too, is that, those fines and that stuff, so. Um, I I need to go run it on the road while it's dry and pull that edges in, you know, and stuff, yeah, but. Anyway, the new blades would make it work unbelievably better, I mean, it can cut a lot deeper.
Me too.
Yeah, so, and like I said, the road grader thing, we can not worry about that other, I'm just gotta figure out what to do with the water plant road and stuff. So what do you think, four hundred bucks for a set of blades?
For the, that's two of them total, four of them?
Yeah, there's the, there are twelve, or two six foot long blades, and I need those for uh, one blade, I cut half of the cutter part. And the other blade's spread a little bit.
I had a guy do my road, I think I paid like eight grand.
But anyway, there's the blades, you know, um, so, um. If you, like I say, the road grader thing, I. We can see how like the. Oh shit. So you can see here, it like cuts here, it cuts here, and I'm controlling that height with the three point on the tractor. And then back here, I'm controlling the height of this spreader blade with this ram thing here, I'm gonna take this off. And put a hydraulic cylinder on there, something I can control from the tractor, that way I can go around and hit those side roads and stuff. Right now, I'm not unable to do that, because I'm not able to control the blade height and stuff without jumping on it, jacking on it, jumping off. Yarding down, jumping back and forth, so I'm gonna put cylinders on it, hydraulic cylinders on it, that I can operate from the tractor. To control this thing, and once I'm able to do that, then I'm working the hell out of Lulu Street, um.
Kirby and Whiskey.
Yes, all the cross streets, yeah, cause like in front of Mel's, how said, there's a big ditch, you know?
Yes.
We had, we had about half a dozen dump truck, we could have dump truck loads up here today.
Did you see, did you see what they did, did you see them as they were going down Marion?
No.
My grandson was riding his dirt bike, he was ahead of me, then one of those was ahead of him, driving, I see this. These things, I don't see them anymore, they just, it was so much dust from that thing going down the road, so I don't know, have you looked at it?
Oh, no, no, I have, I've been following them around and stuff out there, and and they are, they're a huge abuse to our roads.
Yeah, I know. Now, are they going up to Elian's?
No, they're putting that up there on Tony's place above uh, above, above John uh.
Yeah, yeah, that's a place they're working on right now.
The parents, Simper parents?
No, just just above, just above Simper's house.
Honzing.
Are they filling, are they filling in that foundation?
They put a bunch of eco block up there too, so probably yes.
I know, yeah, I know, and truck traffic is from there, yeah.
They even have a lowboy up there, taking up.
We're gonna have some gravel dump truck loads all the way up May Street and just.
Sure be nice to May Street when all the way to Hellwood.
And sometimes we could use a little rock, especially on pine.
Yeah.
All that rock is coming off pine down to Marion Street, so Marion Street has pretty good rock on it. Consequently, Marion Street's pretty nice, you know, where Pine Street, it's got a bunch of. Rock protrusions, that's what you call it now, yeah, a lot of protrusions, yeah, so, um. If we were to put rock on anything, it would be on pine and maybe more down at his end more so too.
Do we have any, any of the bigger rock out here still?
I don't think I do, what would you do with the bigger rock?
Well, I mean, like, put it down and then put the smaller gravel on top of that, you won't regret it.
No, I would just go a three quarter, yeah, I'd just go a three quarter.
So my driveway from my house, like I had a guy, I was trying to find it, it's about a mile long, like from twelve up to my cabin. And I had a, I think at my half, as I shared, I think the total was like eight grand, but I had a guy, a company come in and pull the edges and add rock. When it was wet in the spring and roll it, and it was like, eh, fixed.
Oh, huge.
I've been talking, I'm thinking about the water plant though, but it was. I've been talking, I'm thinking about the water plant though, but it was like, I mean, he did a good job. And, and that road going up to the water plant is way shorter, uh, than my road, but I had the same, same issues, I had you know, spring rains down trees, you know, around Kami, I caused all that mudslide, and then it happened again. I had just ribbons cut in my road on my switchbacks and stuff.
But if we can get that road ditched and crowned.
I'm thinking that this guy, if we wanted to, like, solicit a bid for somebody to come work on it, they'd probably, it has to be a certain dollar amount, or you can't get these guys to come out. But you might be able to get that cleaned up for, I mean, my road was eight, that's less than my road. So, I'm just saying, and they rolled it, I mean, you know what I mean, when it was wet, they.
I mean, that'd be good too, have someone come out and you can tell them.
But like I say, if, if you give me a road grader.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, I mean, I've been road grading for years.
Well, does anybody not lock theirs up at night, I mean?
I went, I went down, looked at the counties, I went down, looked at the counties a couple of times, and I do have keys to their road grader.
Oh, hey, possible deniability, roads face.
Yeah, I've, I've already done.
Truck, I'm a C E O, we just need a trailer.
I've got enough jail time, I don't need to do anymore.
Alright.
Okay.
Okay, so, whatever you think on the maintainer.
Oh, I'd say, yeah.
I think, I think we said, you know, it's only four hundred bucks, you got.
Plus that thing's doing better than that tractor blade did anyway, especially if you get the hydraulics on it. I mean, honestly, that little piece of equipment for the size of our town and what we're doing makes the most physical sense that I can see.
Yeah, it really does, yeah.
Especially when it gets wet and you can really dig into those edges.
I built it specifically for small roads and stuff.
Yeah, but just back to my water plant thing, if we decided to go that way, we could also try to add a bunch of material to those hazardous side streets. Because that's really where, I mean, I've seen, seen some, some horrendous stuff on those roads in winter.
Yeah, exactly, and I would love to get them roads leveled out before winter, cause it makes it a bitch, no problem, it just turns the shit out of it.
That's why I got that cat track on the front of my plow for my side by side, because of all of our unlevel stuff.
It just tears the shit out of the plow. If I get these roads leveled out or something before winter hits, it'd be really great, and I think this maintainer thing would do that. I can actually pull them edges in.
Oh, yeah.
And crown it with this thing, so.
So your maintainer blades, shipping and your fertilizer is your five hundred dollar budget for this month?
Five hundred bucks?
So that needs your five hundred dollars.
Okay, I'll do that, alright, but the blades are gonna be four hundred.
First and then, then get the rest of the money.
I'll see if I can find the blades somewhere else cheaper, I'll just phone calls tomorrow and everything, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, maintainer blades, fertilizer, until next month, and we'll go from there.
Okay, um, Elwood and, uh, telephone cable, okay? So I went, I went there and I asked for two locates, so I got this on record, right? I did look two locates with them, I told them to call me each time they did locate, and they would not call me and stuff. I said, I wanna be there when you give the locate, so I can figure out what the hell I'm doing here and stuff, they would not get back to me. So I called them up, I says, okay, I'm gonna go dig your cable up, I am going to destroy it, because you gotta land on top of the ditch. I talked to Wheeler about it and stuff, and they says, yeah, they're just repairing it and landing on top of ditch, I says, unacceptable, totally unacceptable. I says, I'm gonna go up there and I'm gonna ditch that ditch the way I feel it needs to be ditched, and I'm gonna destroy your cable big time all the way through there. So, I dug up their cable, okay, it's sticking out there in the air, so. That's been over almost two, three weeks ago, yeah, nothing, nobody's complained about losing their phone, nobody's complained about.
It's a dead cable.
That's, that's because it's all through the fiber now.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm like, so this cable's absolutely doing nothing, you know, really, so I'm gonna go up there and I'm gonna finish ditching Elwood.
And, and you called them and tell them that you had ripped it up, and they.
And they didn't come bring anybody out to repair it.
Oh, yeah, they don't even really know where some of it's at, like, mine came from below and then it was.
So I'm gonna go dig Elwood up the way I feel Elwood needs to be dug up to control it, cause I am tired of it running over driveways. And you've seen the flash floods in Texas, there's no reas- and there's no reason why that can't happen here, and it has happened here, I've seen it, yeah. So, we need to get Elwood ditched big time, yeah, do it, do it, I'm gonna do it, so I'm gonna tear the shit out of that cable and go worry about the.
So just ask them if they wanna sell the copper, if you, they want you to pull it out and sell it.
Exactly.
Road, road grader, fuck.
There you go. Kidding, again.
Okay, so, um, now we're running, moving to another subject, uh, you heard Nancy talk about the dog thing, right? She called the cops, the cops came out and approached the, the dog owner, went to his house and approached him and, you know, and got ahold of him on the phone and said, you need to contain your dog, you know?
I was gonna ask her, but I had to come back in.
I asked the cop about it, I said, I went down and I talked, cause I heard it on the scanner, they're like, I'm doing this. And I says, so what's going on there with the dog thing, if I got a dog problem in Pec, I can call you and you will come out and take care of it, and he says, well, he says, I, I'll talk to the people, you know, and, and, and make a presentation, you know, kind of deal. He says, I can't really enforce anything, because unless you got a city ordinance, I says, I've got a city ordinance. There is a city dog ordinance in Pec, you know, so, and there, and there's fines and stuff, I think fines are like ten bucks.
I'm, I'm having a real, real problem with that right now.
Uh, well, a fine's like ten bucks.
And that's an ordinance that can be rewritten and, and, but there's an ordinance, that's more important, yes.
Yeah, so I told the law, I says, there's an ordinance about dogs in Pec, and he goes, oh, there is, I says, yes, I will dig it out, I will give your, the Nesper's County Sheriff's Office a copy of it, so they can understand that we have an ordinance and that you can come out and enforce it when we call, so, anytime you got a dog problem, call the county, they'll be out here.
So I can call them tomorrow if I want to. So every time I see those two dogs walking across the park, no, 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 the two dogs that keep pooping in our shop bays and.
And you gotta say that they're coming over and they're, uh, teasing and aggressive with your dogs, that's all you'd have to say.
Love it.
That would not be a lie.
Yeah.
I've got, I've got.
They'll take care of it.
I've got dogs, the, the tug, the black and the one we saw today, that are coming into my yard, they're going through, uh, who was the next thing, I forget, Becky and Eric or Harrison? Harrington, Harrington, and they're coming through her yard, they're, I've got three humongous tears, and they're going through the tears. One came in, it had dog shit all over it.
Okay, call Nesper's County, give them the name of the dog owner, the, okay, he will come out and he will personally talk to the dog owner and he will go ahead and say, you either start taking care of your dogs, or the city maintenance man will take care of them. And I don't wanna do it, okay, that's why I told the cop, I says, I don't wanna do that, you know, I don't wanna have to be the bad guy when it comes to the dogs around.
Well, I literally, and my daughter is a dog person.
Is that like the price of the woolen?
Yeah.
Anyway.
Cause she called, she texted me today and asked me, and these are the same dogs we saw down here, and this is up by my house, and she literally at four o'clock, can we just call the cops, or is it, is it not a rule to keep your dogs contained?
It is a, it is an order, it is a law, not just a rule, it is a law.
Okay.
Is there a limit on the number of dogs a household can have, Tim?
No.
Okay, there's no.
Um, is it something we should think about, putting a blurb on the website about this ordinance exists?
Well, let me find the ordinance, and if we can, maybe we can put the ordinance right on the website. So I will, I will dig that ordinance up and, and if you want, I will put that on the website for you if you want.
You know, the dog that we've been first for a couple of months heard that it was just sounded like it was just dying?
Yeah, I've been hearing it too.
That's, that's, those are the ones I'm talking to.
Okay, I remember.
It's been.
My house is real quiet.
Yeah, I've heard them up there whining and screaming like.
I hear them.
Yeah, well, they tie him to a tree.
I hear them, yeah.
Okay, I also talked to, um, Nesper's County about, um, blocking roadways, okay, and how me as a maintenance man trying to maintain the roadways, I have vehicles out in the road blocking the roadways, and I'm unable to maintain the roads. And also as far as fires and stuff like that, emergency vehicles getting through, stuff like this, these rigs are intruding on the roadway, okay? So he drove up there and he looked at a situation on Pine anyway, and, um, he said he would talk to the landlord about that and stuff.
Talking about that wreck pickup and stuff, but.
Yes, there's a good possibility, yeah, he said that, he says, do you have an ordinance in your city about that? I says, I don't know, I haven't found one like that and stuff, he says, if you had an ordinance in your city, he says, I would come up there, talk to them, and if they didn't do something with it, within so, said so many hours of time, maybe twenty-four hours even, he said, I will have the rigs towed off, you know, and have them towed out, you know, and I'm like, and I says, well, maybe if it's not just a wreck bridge, what if it's just a regular Joe Bull rig, he says, any rig.
Yeah, I like it.
I will have them towed off, and I just have them come up and towed away.
So we need to look for an ordinance, and if we don't have one, we need to come up with one.
I will make that.
If you don't have, if I can't find one, we need to make.
If we don't, maybe that's something we can talk about in the work session, unless there's other.
I'll, I'll add something for the work session.
And if there, if there is one, we will send a letter to the homeowners that have vehicles sticking out in the road. We will ask them, please remove these items from the road, if not, Nesper's County will be notified, and your, your, uh, vehicles or whatever it is that's in the road will be towed at your expense. With the copy of the, ask for an ordinance, no? Exactly, and it will, at your expense.
Yeah, and, and, and the Nesper's County Sheriff will enforce that for us, they said they would, yeah, if we had something that was pertaining to that.
Yeah, I, I, I like that too, I hate doing that to anybody.
I hate to hear it, you know, but I'm, I'm, I'm just absolutely sick with what's going on.
We gotta be able to maintain the roads and we need fire trucks to be able to buy, so.
Okay, that's exciting, alright, here's the next one.
I like your briefing.
I talked to John Barton up there about the culvert situation on his street and stuff, um, I told John, I says, you know, John, you buy the culvert, a sixteen inch culvert, and I will put it in, okay? I says, that's more than fair, the city only has to supply a landowner with a, um, fourteen foot, twelve foot to fourteen foot access to their properties, is all the city has to supply, okay? Um, and John has that down the street, but where his camper's at, it's not. So John says, that was the way it was when I bought the property, and I'm like, and I've had several other people say, no, that wasn't true, I don't care, I, I told, I told John, I says, I don't, I don't care, I says, I need to fix this flood problem that's going on here, it's washing out my streets, I says, we, and I can't figure out a way to convert the water off of, um, Pine Street to Marion Street to down the hill and stuff anyway, so, um, I says, we need to do something with this up there, so, I put the bug in John's ear, in his head, you know, and he says, well, what? And he finally come around to the point where he's like, well, what kind of pipe? I says, I don't care, as long as it's sixteen inch, you know, culvert, steel pipe, plastic pipe, whatever you think you wanna have in there. I says, I'm game, I says, I just, we just need to fix this flooding problem, okay? That's all fine and damn if we fix John's pipe, but once we fix John's pipe, there's another pipe right below it that's even in the same damn way, you know, and that water's gonna run down there and then come across the road. And if you look where that water's coming across the road, she's gonna have problems, yeah, cause it's coming down through her yard.
So her problem, room becomes a swimming, swimming pool, is that what's gonna happen?
Yeah, yeah, so, you see my pictures of the flooding up there from John's, right, so, um.
So, uh, I've got a question, when Pete put this, this culvert in down here beside the, uh, the, the truck orchard, uh, he put in a bunch of cleanouts there along Big Canyon Road. Does that need to be done up there so people can, so that people can get in there and get stuff out from culverts?
You know, like on Elwood where it's so steep and stuff coming down through there, that would be a good thing to do on that street and stuff. Up there on Marion Street, it's not steep, so we don't have the, the debris runoff coming down plugging them up.
So because it stops in my yard, we had to dig our own ditch and all along our backyard.
That's pretty much level down there where you did that, the long, uh, uh, big can, or Main Street, Big Canyon Road down there where you can put that stuff in when we're.
Yeah, you, you can put in traps if you want, and it's not a bad idea and stuff, but I don't think that's necessary up there. What I've done, you know, or if you know, is I bury a sixteen inch culvert, and then I would drive rebar's down in front of it to keep somebody with basketball or something from plugging anything up, especially if it's a long run.
Yeah.
And that's what would be the problem with John's, is that it's a long run.
Yeah.
So if we were to put in a sixteen inch culvert there in front of John's and stuff, I would definitely drive some steel rods down through there to keep this, this stuff from getting in there to plug it up, yeah, so, um, that would be a, a huge thing to do. Uh, that would be what I would do there, and that is done on Elwood, in fact, I did that ten years ago. Put, drill rebar's down on Elwood, in the culverts on Elwood, and they're still there and stuff, um, to keep them culverts from plugging up and stuff too, so, anyway, um, that's what's going on up there with John. I've talked to him, I put the bug in his ear, so I don't know what more I can do about that other than that, but. I really need, I'd like to get this water raised to the temperature, yeah.
The, the, that other culvert, um, I've, I've been talking to him, he is aware of it, he does know that it needs to be cleaned out, cause he's willing to do something about it, um, so.
Well, if you just get the junk off of the culvert so I can get in there.
So I, and I can keep talking to him to try to ordinate something, I think he's, he, he does want to alleviate the problem to a degree, so it's like, I, I think we can figure out a way to make that a peaceful resolution.
Well, you know, with his property and stuff, I, I would be just happy to clean in the culvert out and clean the culvert, and see where we can go from there.
Of course.
And the same with John, I'm gonna go up there and I'm gonna get rid of them other culverts, there, before John's there and stuff, I'm gonna dig those out so at least down to his bare culvert that he has there, John said that would be okay. He would like to be able to get up around his house still and stuff, you know, to, to get up there to spray and whatever needs to do up there, but I'm like, it's not a maintained road, you know, it's.
But you know how, like, you're talking about flooding our yard, our yard floods.
Oh, I know that one, yeah.
Our biggest concern, and this is, I don't know if I, is that it comes down this way and there's windows right here, that's my living room.
Yeah, I know.
You know, and I, I don't know.
And that's why if we divert that water off of Pine Street and get it flowing down through there, it's gonna relieve a lot of the head of the tube.
Oh, I understand it is.
Yeah, it really would.
My concern is with our, our cement barriers coming from.
Oh, yeah, and I've seen the water pouring out of the hillside on your property and stuff, um, in the spring up there, and I'm like, okay, where's that water coming from, okay, that water's coming from Pine Street, it's coming down through your place.
Yeah, I know.
And it's because the culverts and stuff at Boz Place is not cleaned out. If I get them culverts cleaned out, you know, flowing, it would wipe out more than half of your.
I think with the current state of things, including Anthony in that particular situation might actually make things happen based on.
Yeah.
Relationships right now.
And Anthony's a huge key in all this.
You're rocking it, buddy.
Dealing with Boz, because he hates, cause he came up sole by, or, um, or, or, um.
Times have acquired.
A legitimate.
I've had conflicts with him, and I don't mean to have conflicts with him, but we have, and so that's why he reads his water. I'm not allowed in the yard.
Yeah, I'm just saying, maybe suggestion to work, making that happen.
Yeah, so if you could talk to him and stuff about me coming up cleaning that up and getting crap off of it, so you can at least get in there because that one area between, uh, Lulu Street and that culvert there, he's got a bunch of shit piled up, I can't even get in there.
I'll try to talk to him and see if we can come up with a game plan.
Yeah, but if I can, I think if I can just get that cleaned out with help, you know, just like I ditched, um, Marion Street, you know, and stuff. If we can do that up on Pine.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work with you and him and see if we can come to a peaceful resolution if we have an ordinance that goes along with it. Uh, I think that I could add this to this right away ordinance about impeding the city, uh. I know, I know we had something about. If you find something, well, I, I got, I got an AI draft, but I'm willing, I mean, we could, we could rope culverts right away, emergency vehicles.
So should that be on the, the, uh, work session, agenda?
Yeah, I've got a draft right now, if we find anything.
Okay, I will go through the amendments and see if I can come up with.
And then my only other question for the sheriff's department would be if people got trash and stuff for this instance.
No, there's a trash ordinance too.
In a culvert, will they enforce that too?
Oh, okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Can they take it or what, I don't know.
There's definitely a trash ordinance, they put that going back.
They're gonna get sick of coming out here, but, uh, I mean, we could add.
I don't know, you seem like, you thought that they should be out here more when we talk to them, as far as, he said they have plenty of staff. Yeah, he said, we, we need to be out here more.
That's what I asked him for, you know, I think.
It's just, you know, like with anything, people get complacent and prefer to be where it's.
It's just, you know, like with anything, people get complacent and prefer to be where it's comfortable instead of being out where.
We got a nice fire station where they got a bathroom and you wash your hands.
Kitchen and.
Took a hot pocket, maybe even, we got some wifi.
Because he did say that, he said we got a lot of the force, but they'd rather be closer to home than all the.
I mean, ask him what he likes to eat, you know, I mean, all stuff like Costco's or Stockton, whatever, whatever is really good to see.
Talk to him, play see him again, anyways, moving right along.
And he's been great, he really has, I've said, N B S with him out there and stuff, he's been really helpful, really great, yeah, especially McKenzie, he's, he's amazing, yeah, so.
That's who we were talking to.
Yeah, that's who you guys are talking to, yeah, he's, he's, he's amazing to work with, some of the Owens, I've, I've already.
You done?
I've done, I've done enough.
Okay, Anthony and Justin, you got two minutes, no, excuse me.
Didn't we already do yours when everybody was?
I was saying, we covered ours. Sorry about that. Do you have anything?
Uh, I mean, plants still running along, there's some nuances that I've brought to Justin's attention and we're keeping an eye on. Um, nothing to even really be concerned about at this time, and then just a couple shortages on some things that I've already talked to uh, the mayor about, like, with their chlorine and some other testing chemicals to figure out a logistical forecasting routine so we can just stay on top of it. Um, one thing I do wanna do is, and I've mentioned to Leroy, is start testing the electrical in the old plant building.
I did that, I did that yesterday, I went out and went through all the electrical at plant, the two light switches on the wall are toast. Okay, I bought two of them today, builder supplied, I will go up, replace them, I don't know, I might do some kind of switch and like. That was the only real problem with that, all the plugins got juice, the problem with some of the plugins is they wired in the, the wildleg into the plug-in, so some of them were pumping out over two hundred volts, seven, twenty, so I got rid of those breakers and I redid the breakers in that box so everything's corrected.
So I, I legitimately wanna start moving the electrical stuff out of the plant, and to the set up the desk and move the laptops and stuff where they're one, it's quieter, easier to work there, um, and then again, with the incident I had not too long ago, I could see a situation like that, it could've got a lot worse, um, and we could've lost some important documents, we could've fried the laptops. Um, just peace of mind, I'd like to start setting up some stuff up there, I mean, the, the laptops, so we can move around if we need to. Um, but I wanna start taking advantage of that good spot as well and get it habitable, so as we move more stuff up there, we have kind of a staging spot.
We also need to get that, uh, shelf that we got from the courthouse up there and.
And, and that's part of this, to kind of clean up and make it presentable and accessible and whatnot.
We need to move a lot of those files out of that vault up there so we can have room in that vault to start.
That's just kinda my end, and then, um, I would like to try to figure out a way to handle these blackberries up there, I, I don't think spraying would be an issue, is that something we could do up there to help weed those back?
Yeah.
I don't see it being an issue, but I mean, they are taking over, and they're, and they are, I mean, I'm up there trying to weed eat them, I don't wanna do so much.
It did, can you get some way of, like, what we did with Peter, just ripping them all out?
I took the backhoe up there and was ripping them out, but it scares the hell out of me.
It's terrifying, because there's pipes everywhere.
There's so many valves and pipes and electrical work in the ground there, and when I go through there with that metalie techers, I'm like, hit, 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 hit.
And we spent.
Yeah, I'm like, oh my gosh.
We spent two or three hours looking at old plans and stuff, trying to figure out what pipes are live, which ones are still tied to other ones, and it's like, I don't dig down, I don't know what to tell you.
Yeah, so I just gingery raking the top.
And, and that's, I'm just trying to, it's, it's, again, for the fire protection thing that we talked about the other day, I can only do so much. And that, all that's gonna dry out at some point and the entire, around the entire facility is.
So I think with blackberries, when I, I went to a fire training and with the blackberries, whether they're dead or alive, it's still like an oil, they're still like a, a major fuel.
Yeah.
The blackberry bushes, so.
Well, they go.
It, they.
But I mean, and, and I don't mind working on them till it gets cold out there, but I think some spray would help prevent them from, to slow their growth down a little bit. Um, it's more just manual labor stuff up there I wanna do, um, I don't have any prices or any routine plan yet, but as for the plant itself, it's chugging right along as far as I can tell.
Speaking of berries, I was supposed to announce earlier that my wife has berries, red, uh, red raspberry, various, various, everywhere, berries. She'll even pick them for you.
Excellent.
I'm calling her tomorrow, I'm calling her. I'm just, what I wanna know is if she is interested, because they can be kind of invasive, if she'd like to get rid of it in your.
She would probably park herself, these are, these are thornless ones.
Nice.
That's one of those, yeah.
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 But she doesn't want anybody else in the berry bag, she thinks it's too dangerous, so. But she'll pick them for you.
Sounds good.
But our house sure smells good.
I bet. Yeah, raspberry's my favorite.
It was, uh, DeWalt Edge trimmers, little jacked up.
I thought about looking, like, the handheld, like, the electric little mini chainsaws to try to grill.
I've got the, the blades like that long and it's the, takes a big twenty volt battery, I use that and then I use, uh, when it's not dry and you're not gonna, I use a metal blade on my steel weed eater.
And that's what I got up there, but I mean, it's just, they're trying not to hit anything or spark anything up there.
We almost have to eradicate them with a sprayer or a ball.
Right.
You good?
Yeah, that's like I said, might as well just manual labor, so.
Um, kind of, just last thing, I got the water loss report all done and set up, um, as you guys see, that leak that we were having was insane, eighty percent plus water loss, um, but now we're down to about the average. Um, they say about twenty-five to fifteen percent water loss is good, because you're always gonna have some little leaks, some little what have you. Plus, cleaning out the plant and stuff is gonna take, eat up some of that, so, we are just at the edge of what's normal for water loss.
Great, that's.
Some of the Lincoln Park, it's basically, we might be. The only thing I would do with this if we're gonna give it out is change the.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
Oh, yeah.
I showed it to somebody.
Only because.
Yeah, just to keep track of where we're at.
Yeah, no, it was.
That's an easy fix though.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, but, yeah, I'll, I'll keep updating this and bring this every council meeting, to make sure that's all good to go.
This is a, such a phenomenal improvement in four or five months to go from eighty-six percent loss to twenty-six percent loss.
It is insane.
And all we have to do is actually care enough to go fix the problem and dial in the plant again, that's really all.
And I got three more leaks I know of I need to work.
Yep.
Yeah, so, yeah.
We might be able to squeeze some life out of it yet.
Would be nice.
Alrighty.
I'm starving.
No, I didn't either.
I haven't even been home.
I was working all day.
Mayor comments, I have no comments, council, does anyone have any comments, other than I'm hungry and I want.
Cheryl put a fire out today.
See if it works.
Pictures are, didn't happen.
She did, she, she found a pickup truck on fire and put it out.
You found one, huh?
I have not.
The insurance ever had a motto.
Sitting in the office and the radio went off, Leroy was in there and he like ran out the door, she grabbed the fire extinguisher, I grabbed my keys and we followed Leroy.
Yeah.
And we, at first we thought, well, he, he missed it, he gone too far, so we pulled over, because the guy was like this, his truck was on fire. She jumps out of my car, just this great big fire runs right.
Doesn't have a rule.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, but you know what?
Yeah.
We're too old for that shit, by the way, mayor.
I'm just like, and that, and the guy wanted her to, he just, what did he say to you?
Alright, well, for the next three days, you're like, cock my back and shoulder her.
He goes, ma'am, that, that's a gas tank, and I said, no, he goes, cause it's, oh, I said, I know.
I just wanted to let everybody know how impressed I was watching it happen.
Today would've been the worst day to have vehicles go up.
Especially down here, yeah.
Right after the bridge, they were reporting it on Main Street, weren't they, but it was right after you go to the bridge, right outside.
Bear Creek hits and then Brian Dale's first turnoff into his lot, they're, pick up the city.
So, so they call, that, that's.
Call it Main Street.
Well, I know they did, but then they were later talking about, uh, uh, Bear Creek Road.
I did, I did, I said.
Bear Creek Road's where you live?
No, Bear Creek, let, is Angel Ridge, oh, yeah, yeah, Bear, yeah, you're right, yeah, but still. But, yeah, Angel Ridge, and I just said, like, that was my mistake, I said.
You made a mistake. That's the first one this week, though, isn't it?
You're allowed one a week.
I make mistakes all the time.
Okay, if no one has any other information to share, um, I will adjourn this meeting at nine sixteen. With a reminder of next council meeting is August thirteenth and we have a work session on July twenty-first at nine AM.
Okay.
So this is probably our longest regular meeting.
Sorry about that.
But it was fun.